Thank you.
Good morning Supervisor Semidion.
Good morning Rhonda, can you hear me loud and clear?
I sure can.
Thank you very much ma'am.
You have a wonderful meeting. Good morning Miguel.
Good morning Rhonda.
Have a great meeting.
Thank you.
Good morning, this is a courtesy announcement that our broadcast will go live in one minute. Good morning, this is a courtesy announcement that this meeting is now broadcast live on YouTube and our web portal.
Good morning Mr. K. You were muted, I'll ask you to unmute.
Oh, good morning.
Good morning, thank you for joining us today, we really appreciate you being here.
Oh, it's my pleasure, thank you for inviting me.
You are welcome, when it comes time for the invocation, the president will announce your name and you are welcome to unmute and turn your video back on. Until that time, you're welcome to do whatever.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Good afternoon Vice President Ellenberg, even good morning.
Good morning Rhonda, I was thinking you must have been up for a really long time.
Nice to see you today, good morning Moreta, good morning Tricia.
Good morning.
Have a great meeting.
Thank you.
Good morning.
Thank you Tricia, have a great meeting.
Hello everyone, good morning.
Good morning, thank you for being here.
Thank you for inviting me.
Have a great meeting.
Thank you.
Welcome back Juan and did you want to do my check again?
Hello.
Good morning President Wasserman.
Good morning Ron Schröder, how are you?
Wonderful, how are you?
Doing alright, thank you.
I'm ready for an exciting wonderful day.
In this balmy, balmy Santa Clara County, absolutely.
You know what, actually I was just gonna say, I can see some blue sky this morning and that just makes me feel incredibly happy.
Yes.
I've not seen that for a while, so the fact that there's blue out there just makes my heart warm.
I hear you.
You have a great meeting, your clerk today is gonna be Jess Jamison.
You said our clerk today is who?
Jess Jamison.
Got it, thank you very much.
Recording in progress.
Keeping people in line. Good morning Supervisor Chavez.
Good morning.
Good morning John and Sylvia.
Good morning Rhonda.
Good morning, have a great meeting. And good morning Sean. Good morning Supervisor Lee.
Good morning Rhonda.
Have a great meeting.
Thank you.
I think, oh there, we're 9:30.
We are ready when you are.
I'm just looking, I didn't hear Supervisor Semidian's name, was he here and already here?
He must be here bright and early.
He was the first one here.
Right on.
Kudos.
Alright, super, let's call this meeting to order and ask for a roll call vote please from Jeff.
Supervisor Lee.
Good morning President.
Supervisor Chavez?
Here.
Supervisor Semidian?
Here.
Vice President Ellenberg?
I'm here.
President Wasserman.
Here as well, thank you Jess. Alright now, we'll do the pledge of allegiance, I'll ask Supervisor Chavez to lead us in this one, if you could, if you're able to stand, please do so.
Thank you.
Supervisor Chavez will be leading.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
Indivisible, liberate, and just for all.
There we go. Alright, with that, we'll move on to our invocation, Supervisor Semidian is presenting today, Supervisor.
Thank you very much Mr. Chair, and let me say thank you as well and welcome Abbott Les K, who is the spiritual leader for the Canon Do Zen Meditation Center, Mountain View in my district. Interestingly, Les' early aspirations and inclinations in his life were really closer to the technology world rather than the spiritual world. He went to work in the mid 50s as an engineer for IBM here in San Jose. Started a career and in the late 50s married, started with family, with his wife. And all of that was good, but as Les gave more and more thought to the world in which he lived, he felt that there could and should be more and he described the feeling as, as follows, he said, "It was as if a window to a wider reality was darkened by heavy shutters, preventing recognition of a dimension beyond the confines of the ordinary." And as a result of that contemplation, in the mid 60s, as Les encountered Zen Buddhism, he determined that its worldview struck a chord with him and so he started to attend a small Zen center centered in the garage of a private home in Los Altos, led by a Zen teacher from Japan, and eventually that center moved to College Avenue in Mountain View and then to its current location on Rock Street and named after Canon, the Buddhist personification of compassion. The center, which has a membership now of something like 300, provides a supportive environment for those who live and work in Santa Clara County where they can bring their Zen practice into their daily lives and really explore how to establish the following in, in our day-to-day lives. Back in 1971, Les was ordained as a Zen monk and 14 years later, he became an acknowledged teacher. So we want to welcome him, thank him for being with us and say Abbott Les K, welcome and thank you for our invocation today, thank you Mr. Chair.
Absolutely. Welcome, you're muted sir.
We will.
Abbott, you're muted.
There we go.
There we go, okay. Well, thank you for that lovely introduction and thank you for inviting me to be with you all today, it's, it's an honor and a pleasure to be with you who are doing, all of you who are doing the very hard work of trying to manage the everyday world, the lives of people in the everyday world of, in Silicon Valley. You know, it was Abraham Lincoln who immortalized the vision of our democracy when he portrayed it as, and I'm quoting, "Dedicated to the proposition that all men are created equal." When that vision was articulated on that Civil War battlefield a century and a half ago, it was more than a proposition. It was more than a premise, it was more than a philosophical theory, it was much larger than that. It was an expression of the universal nature of all men and women. A reflection of our fundamental being, of who we are and of what we are inherently. That we are all equal politically, politically and equal socially expresses the truth that we are first of all equal spiritually. Independent of our physical differences, gender differences, ethnic differences or differences in skills and capacities, we, all of us derive from the very same source. And so, we are all sacred, equally sacred without exception. And on this truth rests the basis of democracy. On the principle that all citizens can and should have an equal voice and an equal share in their own governance. It is through your service as the governing body for the people of the county of Santa Clara that you inherit the responsibility to maintain and further the benefits of democracy in a diverse societies whose various viewpoints do not always converge. And today is a challenging time for our society and it is a challenging and a sacred obligation that you all have accepted. In the coming days and months, you will dedicate yourself and your personal sacrifices and you will offer, you will offer your personal sacrifices necessary to govern this democracy and enable it to work for everyone's benefit. And by so doing, you will be continuing the tradition of the Republic that has, has inspired men and women in nations everywhere. I want you all to know that you have the gratitude and respect of the citizens of Santa Clara County. We wish you well as you fulfill your trust, bringing the sacred gifts of democracy to everyone. Thank you.
Thank you Abbott Les and thank you Mr. Chair and colleagues for accommodating this invitation today. Thank you Abbott.
And Abbott, Abbott Les, I just wanted to say that 55 years ago, I was operating a key punch and a verifier and I was wiring boards. Oh, you, you mean the good old days? The good old days, yes sir, thank you for your words this morning, thank you Supervisor Semidian. Thank you. With that, we'll move on to item number four, which is our Announcing Adjournments in Memoriam. We have Supervisor Chavez, the first two followed by Supervisor Ellenberg.
Thank you so much, and today colleagues, we adjourn in memory of Nigel John Ball and I wanted to acknowledge and welcome his wife Pamela Ball, who is joining us here today. Nigel Ball was a true example of the Silicon Valley community with a celebrated career in the tech industry and also in the nonprofit realm. He was a longtime member of Raft, the resource area for teaching, which focuses on hands-on STEM education, STEAM education and you know, art and all good things that children can get their hands sticky and dirty and learn. After 25 years at HP, Nigel worked as Raft's Marketing Director as an Encore Fellow. Eventually, he transitioned back to the tech industry working at Oracle, but continued to serve on the Raft Board of Directors for multiple terms. In 2018, Nigel served as interim CEO and incorporated Raft's commitment to hands-on learning into his role from managing marketing and development goals to tinkering with new kits, to helping the store and even driving the Raft truck to pick up material donations. There is really nothing he wouldn't do to serve Raft and the children it serves. Over the past year, he served on the board and did everything he could to support educators during the pandemic. I remember, and I know many of us who are listening today, have used Raft's materials as, as parent volunteers at their children's schools. Raft supports so much art in our schools that children would never have an experience to engage with without them. Former Raft Board Chair Webb McKinney shared the following about Nigel. "It's hard to imagine anyone other than Raft's founder Mary Simon, who has contributed more to Raft than Nigel. He will be greatly missed by his family, friends, and also by Raft. We are grateful for all of Nigel's contributions to Raft over these years. Nigel's and his enthusiasm for education and passion for lifelong learning will be very much missed by our community, I know by the Raft organization. And I wanted to share on behalf of the Board of Supervisors, our deep condolences to family and friends, and particularly Pamela, who's joined us today. We're sorry for your loss, but we are so grateful for Nigel's contributions to educators and children countywide. Thank you for letting us share his life with everyone today."
Thank you. Next one Supervisor.
Thank you. Today, we also adjourn in memory of Jerry Doyle. I wanted to acknowledge and welcome Jerry's wife Julie Doyle, who is joining us, and a particular welcome to Jerry's Uplift Family, Daryl Ivora, CEO, Kathy McCarthy, President, and Don Taylor, the Executive Director of the Bay Area. Jerry was born in Wisconsin and moved to California where he attended the University of California Berkeley for graduate school and became a licensed clinical social worker. Jerry initially began working with vulnerable children and teens as the Director of Chase House, a residential treatment program for adolescent boys in Madison, Wisconsin and in the Wisconsin Department of Health Services Division of Family Services. He joined the Eastfield Children's Center in San Jose, now known as Uplift Family Services in 1970 and was named Executive Director later that year. Jerry quickly established himself as one of the foremost advocates for mental health services for children and their families. In 1991, Uplift Family Services initiated California's first in-home wraparound program as an alternative to institutionalize placement for the highest acuity children and then successfully pushed for legislation that resulted in this becoming a statewide program and, and accepted process, process. Jerry's tireless advocacy of children's behavioral health issues and pioneering of the wraparound approach to family supportive services truly transformed the foster care system in California. He helped thousands and thousands of children and families over his decades of service. Jerry's extensive list of appointments and awards include being appointed by Governor Schwarzenegger as a Commissioner on the Mental Health Services Oversight and Accountability Commission to oversee Prop 63, Mental Health Funds, and being awarded the National Herald Pipe and Brink Award for Excellence in Behavioral Healthcare Management. He was President of both the California Council of Community Behavioral Health Agencies and the California Alliance for Children and Family Services. He retired in 2009 after 39 years at the helm of what is now one of California's largest children's services agencies. Jerry earned a nationwide reputation as a champion for children in crisis and under his leadership, the agency grew from serving 140 children a year to approximately 20,000 children and families today. His legacy extends far beyond the agency, impacting vulnerable children and families throughout California each and every day. He was truly a big bear of a man with a very gentle soul. He cried at movies, even the occasional television commercial. He was very proud of his daughter Tasha, also a golden bear, and his three grandchildren Hope, Luke, and Zach. He was thrilled that his son Derek had made, made a home near him and was eagerly anticipating a new grandchild this spring. I really am honored to get an opportunity to share his legacy. I just will say to his family and friends, we are so sorry for your loss and want to just acknowledge that there are thousands of children's and families' lives who are better because this big bear of a man wouldn't let any child or any family go unserved and we're so grateful for letting you share his memory with us. And I'm now going to ask Supervisor Semidian to share his thoughts.
Supervisor Lee.
Thank you Mr. Chair and thank you Supervisor Chavez and, and thank you for a really lovely remembrance of a lovely human being. I wanted just to add a personal recollection, I served on the board in the late 90s and got to know and learn from Jerry at that time and we talk today about wraparound services with comfort and familiarity, it never occurs to us that we wouldn't think about how we treat each individual as an individual and ask ourselves what array or complement of services will help them realize their potential and be the most successful. But Jerry really was a pioneer in this field and it wasn't just a technical or professional passion with him, he really had so much to share about the importance and unique nature of each individual we served and how relying on program and funding streams that were not tailored for each individual was really to do them a disservice. So I want to add my personal recollection for someone that I had the privilege of working with, someone of whom I was fond and certainly had the utmost respect, but most I want to say thank you for the opportunity I had to learn from someone who understood so much and gave so much, thank you Supervisor Chavez and thank you Mr. Chair.
Thank you Supervisor Semidian, my mom worked at Eastfield in the late 60s and I'll, I'll let her know that Jerry passed. Thank you very much, with that, we turn to Supervisor Ellenberg.
Thank you very much, today we are also adjourning our meeting in memory of Robert Barrett. Robert was a light in the lives of the many people with whom he interacted. An active community member, Robert often prioritized the needs of others above his own. Robert was born on March 13th, 1962 in Hawaii, he was proud of his roots. Loved the island culture, music, the fauna and the cuisine that surrounded him in his early years. Robert knew that the weight of people's hearts was through their stomachs. In his youth, he was a chef in San Francisco, he carried his passion of cooking for people into the later years of his life, often feeding others who were unstablely housed. Besides providing warm and delicious meals, Robert regularly donated clothing and food directly to people experiencing homelessness in Gilroy. During the holidays, Robin, Robert regularly assembled packages containing clothing, hygiene products and food for people who were experiencing homelessness. Robert advocated for many of his peers while he served on the county's HIV Commission. His voice was crucial to the commission and his colleagues noted that he spoke his mind even when his perspective was unpopular if he believed that something was neither fair nor just. Robert devoted much of his personal time to the Onsite Dental Care Foundation, a local nonprofit that provides low to no cost mobile dental services to people with otherwise limited access to oral health care. After having been a patient there in 2010, Robert helped regularly at outreach events and encouraged all those he knew to receive care for the, to seek and receive care for their oral health. He continued his service to others as an active member in his church community. Robert passed away on May 22nd at 59 years old and will be dearly missed by so many. Robert is survived by his two children, a son and a daughter, and the many friends he's made throughout his, his years of service to our community.
Thank you very much Supervisor Ellenberg. That concludes Agenda Item Four, Announcements in Memoriam. We're now going to move on to Item Five, which is Commendations and Proclamations, but before I do that, in an effort to help manage the meetings better, I'll ask that anybody listening now who intends to speak during public comment, register electronically, so we'll have a good idea of how many speakers we have and the time allocation when we get to Item Number Six. That said, we're now going to Item Five A Supervisor Chavez, this is your proclamation. Presentation.
Thank you very much, today I have the privilege of presenting a proclamation declaring August 2021 as Muslim Appreciation and Awareness Month. Along with our diversity, our county takes great pride in supporting religious freedoms. Santa Clara County is strengthened by the many varied religious, political and cultural traditions and contributions of our diverse population, including those who practice Islam. Our county has a thriving community of over 60,000 Muslim residents who make rich contributions to the social, cultural and economic vibrancy of the United States and have distinguished themselves by fostering understanding among all people through faith and service. Santa Clara County is home to numerous mosques and the South Islamic Association, established in 1980, is one of the first mosques to be established in the Bay Area. The Muslim Community Association of Santa Clara is the largest mosque in Northern California. Even after the shelter in place order was lifted, mosques, community centers, nonprofits, businesses and other establishments continue to diligently practice social distancing, mandatory face masks and sanitation measures to curb the spread of the COVID-19 virus. They continue to conduct online programming and sermons and help services outside. They've answered the call for help by donating hundreds of thousands of dollars in funds, distributing thousands of pounds of food and sewing masks to help protect those on the front line. Since the start of the pandemic, the Support Life Foundation in partnership with Second Harvest Food Bank and the Muslim Community Association-supported Muslim Sisters Helping, Muaid and dozens of other volunteers distributed an average of 28,000 pounds of food a week to at-risk communities in Santa Clara County totaling 1.4 million pounds of food and coordinated 12,000 vaccines throughout the Bay Area. It is appropriate to acknowledge and promote awareness of the invaluable contributions of the Muslims in California and across the country and to extend them the respect and camaraderie that everyday Americans deserve. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Supervisors of Santa Clara County does hereby proclaim August 2021 as Muslim Appreciation and Awareness Month, to acknowledge the rich history, contributions and guiding virtues of Muslims and to commend all Muslim communities in California for the lasting positive impact they've made toward the advancement of our nation. I want to welcome Sheikh Al-Duin El-Bakri to receive the commendation on behalf of the Muslim community, welcome.
Thank you very much for inviting me and thank you very much for this acknowledgement and this proclamation. I'm the Chairman of the Board of the Support Life Foundation and we have tried our best to excite and involve the entire community in volunteering, actually, so that we can accomplish this like final mile, so Second Harvest Food Bank delivers the, the goods to basically the grounds of Muslim Community Association and the grounds of Muslim Community Association and other Islamic centers. And then we use these mosques and places to actually deliver to the whole community, not only to the Muslim community, obviously, but to everyone, reaching around like nine hundred and fifty families minimum every two weeks and delivering food. As you said, last year was around a million. This year, we're hoping to have accomplished like around three million, so tripling the operation. And it's our honor, it's our duty. We don't have to be thanked for that. It's what we have to do anyway, but we thank you for the proclamation and the acknowledgement. It's really humbling and honoring at the same time. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you for joining us.
Of course.
Thank you. With that Supervisor, we're going to move on to Supervisor Lee, who has a proclamation.
Yes, good morning. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, very good. So first of all, thank you President Wasserman. During the month of August, the Syrian-American community commemorates the Assyrian genocide of nineteen fifteen and hundred years of Assyrian exile from the Erya Plain. For three centuries, Assyrians have reached for the blessings of freedom and opportunity in the United States, and the nearly three hundred thousand Assyrian-Americans who have made the United States their home have greatly enriched our nation through the leadership in business, agriculture, academia, government, science, and the arts. The Assyrian genocide from nineteen fifteen through nineteen eighteen, as stated at the Paris Peace Conference of nineteen nineteen, resulted in ethnic cleansing and the loss of over two hundred and fifty thousand lives, over half of the Syrian population in regions between Iran and Turkey. The Syrian people of the Middle East, along with the Armenians and Greeks, were subjected to severe persecutions and brutal injustice at the hands of their oppressors during the first genocide of the twentieth century. August seventh serves as a memorial of those who gave their lives in pursuit of freedom, justice, and liberty of the Syrian people. And this Assyrian Memorial Day is commemorated around the world as an opportunity to observe a time of renewal, rededication, and recommitment to the same ideals of these fallen heroes. I'd like to read a few lines from the proclamation. Whereas the Santa Clara County joins the Assyrian-American community in its annual observance of the Assyrian Memorial Day and its observance of this hundred and sixth anniversary of the Assyrian genocide of nineteen fifteen and the hundred years of Syrian exile from Erya Plain to raise awareness of these tragedies so that we may better understand the importance of eliminating hatred in our own communities. Now therefore be resolved that the Board of Supervisors does hereby proclaim the month of August 2021 as the Assyrian Memorial Month in support of our local Assyrian-American community and the Syrian people. Rochelle Yustian, the president of the Assyrian Association of San Jose, is joining us today and has a few words. Rochelle, would you please?
Rochelle, welcome.
Apologies, it looks like she's in attendees. I'm going to promote to panelist.
Thank you, Jess.
I just promoted her. She should be in. Hello. Here we go.
Oh, hello. Well, thank you very much Supervisor Otto Lee for the great introduction and the great history summary of the Assyrian genocide, Assyrian Martyrs' Day that you've provided. And also, I express my gratitude to the entire members of the Board of Supervisor, esteemed members of the Board of Supervisor. Thank you again for proclaiming Assyrian Martyrs' Day, August seventh, as Assyrian Martyrs' Day in the month of August for this occasion in honor of the Assyrian martyrs and the genocide of nineteen fifteen and continued genocide thereafter, which led to ethno-cleansing and uprooting Assyrian from their ancestral homeland. I would like to begin my remarks actually by a poem, by given the current climates in the Middle East. A 13th-century poet, Sadi, it's a Persian poet, which, in Farsi, he says, in English, basically translates into human beings are members of a whole in creation of one essence and soul. If one member is afflicted with pain, other members uneasy will remain. If you have no sympathy for human pain, the name of human you cannot retain. I'm here today, obviously, to just bring once more awareness on the genocide that took place and it continues to place against Assyrian nation, against the Christianity in the Middle East. And unfortunately, as we all observe what happened to the people of Afghanistan, the innocent people of Afghanistan, I would like also to empathize with them as we are all human, just like this poet mentioned. And we are all members of the same body. We feel the same pain that they feel today. We feel the betrayal that they feel today, to be left alone, the innocent civilians in the hands of extremists that unfortunately, in the name of religion, they practice the brutal ways of their own way. It's my way versus the grave, my way or the grave way versus the way that we are more accustomed to. We practice in democracy, which is a freeway that all different religions and different belief systems can carry on their paths parallel to each other, and sometimes they might separate depending on what their destination is. But they're all going forward in harmony in one freeway. This is the true meaning of democracy, and we as humans shall work hard to be able to keep this kind of democracy going forward. What I feel about people of Afghanistan is exactly the same thing that happened to our people in nineteen fifteen, to Christian people of nineteen fifteen. The genocide against our nation was happening centuries before, but what happened in nineteen fifteen and continued thereafter was as a result of betrayal of the superpower at the time, British government, that left basically the Christian people in the hands of extremists in the area. And as it seemed like Christian people are allies of the Western world, we were brutally massacred, being associated with them. I feel that there should be a sense of responsibility for the superpowers when they are they are trying to bring peace to the Middle East or bring peace to nations of that region. There is a sense of responsibility for being there versus not being there. And when you are not there in your void, then the brutal scenes that we witness today are the things that will not be avoided if this keeps ongoing. So again, I would like to thank the Board of Supervisor, and I just want to make sure that this awareness continues because by being aware on this side of the world, in the land of democracy, our goal is just to learn to continue living in a freeway rather than my way or the grave way, where each religion, each ideology can practice their own faith and their own way and move forward. Thank you again for this opportunity and for presenting this proclamation.
Thank you. Thank you Supervisor Lee. And Supervisor Lee, if you'll stay with us, we have our final Commendation Five C, a presentation by you and Supervisor Semidion.
Yes, thank you. El Camino Health will be celebrating its sixtieth anniversary on September first, 2021. And Supervisor Joe Semidion has joined me in congratulating El Camino Health on this milestone. Dan Woods, the CEO of El Camino Health, and the staff, John Cohen, Senior Director of Government Relations and Community Partnerships, are joining us today. In the mid nineteen fifties, when orchards and fields in the Los Altos and Mountain View area were quickly turning into suburbs and commercial enclaves, a group of physicians and concerned citizens danded together to establish a much-needed community hospital. The few existing local hospitals were at capacity. Hospitals north and south were severely overcrowded. The best and the fairest way they decided was to form a hospital district and levy a tax so the cost would be shared among the population of the entire area. Bringing that vision to life, El Camino Health opened its doors sixty years ago with a mission to heal, relieve suffering, and advance wellness in our community. Today, as nationally recognized doctors and care teams are committed to providing the highest-quality personalized care designed around patients' unique health needs. In the last six decades, El Camino Health has grown to include two nonprofit acute care hospitals, Mountain View and Los Altos, urgent care, multi-specialty care, and primary care locations across Santa Clara County, ensuring the full continuum of care for its patients. The unique part is that El Camino Hospital Boards and Directors tracks compliance issues, makes policy decisions, and monitors organizations' management to make sure policy decisions are carried out in a way that aligns with El Camino Health's mission. And with Supervisor Semidion, would you like to add some comments before we present the board's commendation, please?
Only to say thank you Supervisor Lee for leading in this effort, and thank you to El Camino for all of their good works that benefit the folks that Supervisor Lee and I represent. I would like to just note, when I came back on the board in 2013, I discovered immediately how essential the work of El Camino was in our area. We talk often about our, quote, "healthcare partners" out in the community. That's a phrase that is perhaps bandied about a bit casually, but as I see the CEO, Dan Woods, here, and members of his team in the meeting on the call, I want to say that the phrase "healthcare partners" really does describe the working relationship that we have with El Camino. It seems as if every time we've had a need or a challenge in the community, we've been able to turn to El Camino. Going back to the AED, the defibrillator work that Supervisor Chavez and I were involved on, the Aspire Mental Health Program for teens who needed that kind of mental health service, really a unique first-in-the-state kind of proposition, work with the Better Health Pharmacy to make sure that medications were available to people of modest means. And of course, throughout the pandemic, when others had to be cajoled or extorted, exhorted, just to be clear about that word, exhorted to step up on testing, El Camino was right there from day one, said, "We'll commit the resources and we accept that responsibility." And of course, they've been a healthcare partner with us throughout the pandemic and the challenging times. So a personal thanks, a thanks on behalf of the folks that we represent, and congratulations. Looking forward to many, many, many more good years and opportunities for partnership. Thank you Supervisor Lee for allowing me to join you in this celebration and commendation.
Thank you, thank you Supervisor Semidion. And before I present, I read out the few paragraphs. I just want to add a personal note. So El Camino Health has actually delivered all three of my daughters, and they are all now sixteen, thirteen, and ten years old. And certainly, I have experienced it three times in the hospital, and every single time, the services was absolutely excellent. So I'm just very honored to be able to help present this proclamation today. Reading a couple of the sentences from our commendation here. Whereas El Camino Health is known for patient safety excellence, earning five stars from the Centers for Medicare and Medicaid Services, and A grade from the Leapfrog Group, the Health Grade Outstanding Patient Experience Award, and spots on the Newsweek's Best Maternity Care Hospitals and IMB Watson Health One Hundred Top Hospitals in 2021. And whereas September first, 2021, will mark the sixtieth anniversary of El Camino Health. Now therefore, be resolved that the Board of Supervisors does hereby recognize and congratulate El Camino Health on the occasion of the sixtieth anniversary and for its incredible dedication and service to improving the quality of life for the residents in Santa Clara County. So once again, congratulations and thank you, Dan, and your team for playing an essential role in our county. Our staff will deliver the board commendation to your team this week. Dan, would you have a one say a few words?
Thank you very much. And first of all, I would like to say that I am very humbled to be in the presence of the previous proclamations, quite frankly, with regards to humanity. So being in that presence truly is humbling. I especially wanted to acknowledge and thank Supervisors Otto Lee and Joe Semidion for co-sponsoring the commendation for El Camino's sixtieth birthday. And I also want to acknowledge and recognize the full board of supervisors for this commendation recognition as well. You know, sixty years ago in nineteen sixty-one, there were, like you said, a bunch of apricot orchards here, and it gave birth to a new hospital. And so then and today, our mission is to heal, relieve suffering, and advance the wellness in our community. Today, I would say that El Camino is locally, regionally, and quite honestly, nationally recognized as a healthcare provider. And I want to believe that our people trust their provider when they come for healthcare at El Camino. Looking forward, the comments made earlier, we absolutely are desirous of continuing the outstanding high quality of service that our patients and community residents that can trust and believe in when they walk across our threshold. Today, this award and this plaque, I think, is just, is a reflection of those that have gone before. And although I'm here today, it's all of the tireless efforts, and I want to acknowledge and on behalf of our physicians, our nurses, and exceptional employees, thank you for taking the time to celebrate our anniversary. And if I can add live just a little bit more, over the past few weeks, I've talked to a hundred CEOs or colleagues across the US and how we are fighting for this pandemic. We are very lucky to live in the county that we live in with the level of collaboration of the providers, and that wouldn't happen without the leadership of the Board of Supervisors. And that's where it starts, and that's where I just want to acknowledge your leadership and thanking us today as well as helping lead the fight against this pandemic. It's truly an honor and privilege to be here. Thank you.
Thank you. And Dan, I'd like to add, and I don't want to cut you off Supervisor Lee. I just had an additional comment I wanted to pass Dan's way. I go back about twenty years with El Camino, especially here in Los Gatos, and their whole application with staying as a hospital and the demolition and the ribbon cutting and all that El Camino has done. And I know we're talking Sunnyvale, Mountain View area, but I'll call the mothership. But going through, El Camino has an enormous presence in Los Gatos, in my district as well. And what you have done for the people of Los Gatos and the way the people of Los Gatos speak about your personnel, your doctors, your entire program. And I would be remiss not to mention the emergency brain surgery on my mother that saved her life. I just want to thank you from the bottom of my heart for your entire organization and all your personnel and all you've done and all you continue to do. Thank you very much, sir.
Thank you. Thank you for trusting us.
Thank you. All right, Supervisors Lee and Semidion, thank you very much for that. We're now going to move on to public comment. And Jess, I see we're seventeen, eighteen, nineteen, twenty, we're over our fifteen number. If you could please give each speaker one minute to speak. And individuals, everyone who is waiting to speak and speaking during public comment, and I see now that we're going to be up closer to thirty. Again, this is your opportunity to speak on anything not on today's agenda. And the reason I stress that is I want to make everything fair to everyone. So please keep your comments to items not on today's agenda. If you want to speak on something on today's agenda, please wait. If you want to speak on something on today's agenda, please wait until that item comes up. Thank you, Jess. I'll turn it over to you for one minute each.
Thank you. Our first speaker is Tessa Woodman-C. I've unmuted you. Please accept the unmute. You'll have one minute to speak. The timer will start when you begin speaking.
Thank you, Tessa Woodman-C. Yes, I am speaking on what is not on the agenda. What is not on the agenda is our climate crisis. And this is what needs to be on the agenda. All the time that was spent in commemorations and all the stuff that you've been talking about up until this point and has reduced our time for public comment, which you only give us one minute, has to be readjusted. The public needs to talk. And that's what we need. It needs to come up from the bottom because it's not coming from the top because of business as usual and political and economic things that are motivating our city and our leadership. And we need to be only talking about our emergency. And everything we're talking about needs to be about changing our urban land use to protect human health and well-being. We need eat, grow, learn centers, all about urban sustainability and zero-carbon footprint of our jobs. We need to degrow. And that needs to be our emphasis going forward.
Our next speaker is a phone call ending in 043. I've unmuted you. Please accept the unmute. You'll have one minute to speak.
Yes, I just want to, I just want to say that I don't, I, this is with regards, with regards to the mandates. I don't think that you guys, I think that you guys should not be doing mandates because, for the for the COVID because they do not work. You don't realize it, but they don't work. And also Sarah Cody. You need to remove her because she's, she thinks she knows more than the CDC and they, and and, and it, and I can tell you, she does not. And also, I am also one of the people that is wanting to remove all, every single one of you board members because of the way you've handled the COVID. And
Our next speaker is Paul Soto. I've unmuted you. Please go ahead.
Yes, Paul Soto from the Horseshoe. I'd just like to say Assalamualaikum to my Muslim brothers and sisters. And just to state that I can't help but draw the parallels between the, the American genocide that happened right here, right here in this county, you know, via Peter Burnett's, Peter Burnett's proclamation that he gave January 6, 1851, stating that the war of extermination against the Indians is without a doubt to be expected, end quote. And so I, I think we, there's one quote that states that we deny a person his humanity when we deny a person his history. And I think the city and the county both need to start getting very acquainted with what happened to the Native American. I'm, I'm a California-registered Native Mission Indian. My people are from, built the Mission San Diego. And so the mission vows that are here in, in Santa Clara County, I think we really need to have a conversation about those because they removed them from Santa Cruz County. The Amunmutson was successful in doing that. I think here they need to do the same.
Our next speaker is Vic O'Hakian. I've unmuted you. You'll have one minute to speak.
Thank you. I'm Vic O'Jackian. On Tuesday, August 17, the Campbell City Council approved a city suicide prevention policy, the eighth such policy by cities in Santa Clara County. And I just wanted to commend Vice President Ellenberg for her involvement in helping get that document passed. And her name was mentioned a couple of times by city council members in their comments when they approved the document. So simply, I'm here to say, Susan, thank you.
Our next speaker is Linda Edwards. You'll have one minute. Please go ahead.
Hello, my name is Linda Edwards and I live and vote in District 3. As a county employee during the pandemic, I was an essential worker and a disaster service worker. Your recent vaccination mandates have created stress and mental and emotional anguish for the thousands of Santa Clara County employees and their families who have thoughtfully opted to not get these vaccines at this time. And they have also created an unnecessary negative work environment for the other 20,000 county employees who also feel threatened because they're not naive enough to think that one shot will be enough to make you happy. In less than six months, they'll be told to get a booster shot or they'll be fired. And then six months after that, they'll be told to get another booster or be fired and so on. This mandate will create worker shortages and worker relation problems for years to come, not to mention an avalanche of potential lawsuits at taxpayer expense. Please stop the madness now and reevaluate, reevaluate your stance on vaccine mandates. Respect our rights to choose. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Kearns. I've unmuted you. Please go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Board of Supervisors, for the leadership that you've shown and thought.
Apologies, that was a misclick on my part. Kearns, please start again.
Thank you, Jess.
Thank you, President and Board of Supervisors. I want to thank you for your leadership and thoughtful interpretation of scientific fact dealing with our battle against once a century pandemic. Part of the response that is going to follow from the pressure, direction, and decisions you've made now requires community leadership to address the looming deadline for disconnection of utilities, energy and water utilities. Cities, municipalities, and the governor have spent up to, committed to $2 billion to suspend disconnections. The state is ending its suspension at the end of September. I urge the board to consider a countywide moratorium so that ratepayers and utilities can commit to a sustainable solution under the guidance of the CP.
Our next speaker is Melissa Ortiz. I've unmuted you. Please go ahead. Melissa Ortiz, there you are.
Hi, thank you, Supervisors. I'd just like to thank you for having this vaccine be mandated for all county workers. It makes me feel a lot safer. And I super appreciate that. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Andre Oliveira. I've unmuted you. You'll have one minute to speak. Please go ahead.
Hi, everyone. My name is Andre Oliveira. I worked in the Environmental Services at O'Connor Hospital, and I'm a hero. I don't have superpowers to fight crime, but I have the tools to fight COVID. Right now, we're at war with an invisible and ruthless enemy, and we're winning. I like to think that I have a small part on it. That's why I feel that not only we deserve a bonus, but that we've earned it already. So as the chief steward of SEIU of more than 600 essential workers who've been understaffed and overworked for too long years, we ask you to recognize their dedication into serving our community. Thank you so much.
Our next speaker is Julie. Please go ahead.
My name is Julie and I work in the Assessor's Office. I request that the county establish an updated policy for the required COVID-19 vaccinations to include accommodating, accommodations policy for those who, that decline the county-required vaccination injections. Many of us have continued tirelessly to service the community and our clients' needs in front of, at the frontline of this pandemic, putting our own safety at risk. We have rearranged our work schedules, our family lives, in order to support the safety needs of our community. According to an SSA voice meeting, there's approximately 4,400 employees who have declined these injections. There has been a lack of community and agency support for those that declined the COVID-19 injections. These individuals have dedicated their careers to their, to their jobs, their jobs and the community, and now face the risk of termination of their employment for declining these required injections. In many ways, the county management has taken this opportunity to misuse and abuse their
Our next speaker is Alex. I've unmuted you. Please go ahead.
Thank you for the opportunity to share and Sister Soto for bringing up the invisible Native American history in this county, and also to all the frontline medical staff who've helped save lives during this pandemic. As a vaccine member of the greater Santa Clara County community, I am concerned with the mounting aggression against local workers who are not vaccinated. It worries and frightens me the punitive language and actions taken, passive or active, against those who are not vaccinated. Locally, I've heard my colleagues use terms such as murderer. And nationally, there have been some public calls to deny treatment for those who are not vaccinated. I worry an infirmity culture of us versus them is being created by rigid rules and inflexibility, possibly marginalizing and stigmatizing our fellow community members by vaccination stats. Please let's engage and not estrange.
Please go ahead. Harold, I see you're unmuted. Go ahead and start your comments.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. I'm Harold. I'm a mobile crisis behavioral health clinician. I've been responding to the community in person. And I've seen just how serious or not that the community members are taking the pandemic and precautions. And I'm concerned about the unpredictable and unstable safety of our community and our, and your employees. When the, when the county instructed us to return to our shared desks and shared working spaces, SEIU and coworkers' fears and anxieties increased, especially due to the newest variant that was already circulating. The county told us that we were safe and they, and that they had prepared us for, for return. In the first week, at least three of your employees contracted COVID at Juvenile Hall, and multiple programs have continued to go through, continued exposure outbreaks. Your employees who have left, who have not left the frontline throughout this pandemic continue to be on the frontline of risk when it isn't warranted. They continue to battle their own anxieties and mental health issues in regards to this pandemic and returning to work. They have found that work-life balance that we all preach about to our clients.
Our next speaker is Tui Trong. I've unmuted you. Please accept the unmute. You'll have one minute to speak. And we will come back. Our next speaker is Lawanda Avila. I've unmuted you. You'll have one minute. Please go ahead.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hey there. I'm a rehabilitation counselor and I wanted to request accountability in the Behavioral Health Department for them not following the telework policy. I had a meeting with Margaret Abolore this morning regarding my denial. She stated I was denied because she has to look at it as a whole for the department, that they can't divide up the requests, that they have to be considered as a whole, even though I can remotely do my tasks independently and adequately. And so Page 4 of the telework policy says its approval is to be given on a case-by-case basis. Also, she says that I may need to go cover a sit call one day. And I said, "Well, the telework policy also on Page 7 says a teleworker may be required to work onsite during a regular scheduled telework day." So the policy is not being followed, and I would like them to abide by the policy as I am abiding by their policies as well.
Our next speaker is a phone number ending in 048. I've unmuted you. Please go ahead.
Good morning. My name is Stacy Laris and I live in District 5, 20-year resident of this amazing county. Unfortunately, these last couple of years have been a nightmare. I have questions for you guys, which is when is the Board of Supervisors going to have an exit? The plandemic plan? Why is it just continuous, everyday, 24/7 fear porn? Why doesn't the Board of Supervisors get out on street corners and give out fresh fruits and vegetables and vitamins and have yoga classes and therapy provided for all the mental health that is just exploding? Children as young as nine years old committing suicide. Do you guys know about the page on the CDC site about shielding interim operational considerations for implementing the shielding approach to prevent COVID-19 infections in humanitarian settings, camps, green zones? What is this, you guys? Please help us. Stop the
Our next speaker is Ruben. I've unmuted you. Please go ahead.
Hi, yes, I have a few questions for all the supervisors. When are you all planning to return to in-person meetings? It seems to me like if I'm able to go to the county and pay my taxes, you know, in person, I, I, you know, you have employees working full-time, you should be able to meet in person. I want to know, I want you guys to get back to me and tell me when you're going to return to your meetings in person. And two, regarding vaccines, why are you requiring all your employees to get vaccinated? Why don't you do some research on that? Realize that this is not a regular vaccine. This is genetic therapy. So you guys need to be a little more informed and, and you need to work for the people. You know, that's what you're here for. But I would like you to tell me when you're going to get back in person as soon as possible. Thank you.
Our next speaker is David Longcor. Please go ahead.
Good morning, Board of Supervisors. My name is David Longcor. I've worked for Santa Clara County for 20 years. I'm an electronic repair technician at VMC Facilities. I would like to express my disgust with ESAHR for the handling of our reclassification window and process still. This is still tremendous injustice as it was three years ago. Due to the classification I was, I am currently in was outdated 30 years. I was moved into a classification revision two years ago during these meetings was told lies and misled by ESAHR. During the reclassification revision, was told a new classification would have to be created to address some items I raised and would not be added during the revision process. During the recent revision reclass window, I was denied again and was told not so many words, I was properly classified. I implore you to instruct ESAHR to do better, be better in the proper evaluation of classifications to keep us up to date and current with other surrounding necessities. Thank you.
Hello?
Yep.
Oh, okay. Great, great. Thank you, everyone. Scott Largin. I didn't hear my name called, so. Like the previous speakers, I do think it is more than time to open up the chambers and, and let the public back in. You know, out, out there at the county building, it's the public square. It's where people can, of course, get together before meetings, during meetings, kind of politic, it's know each other. And I think it brings the community more together. I kind of feel like you're all kind of hiding out. And it just seems, it seems more than time for this. I was at the park yesterday with my daughter. I go almost every day now. And it's neat to see her socialize and see all the other children and how excited they are to kind of be back together again. And I think we need that. I think our community is totally divided. And even the anti-democratic city of San Jose has finally opened up their city hall and opened up their chambers and started to allow the public in. It's time, guys. I'm zoomed out and I'm sure you are. Let's get back in the chamber.
Our next speaker is Edward Strine. I've unmuted you. Please go ahead. Edward Strine. We'll come back to Edward. Our next speaker is Francine Gonzalez.
Hello and thank you, everyone. My name is Francine. I work for the Department of Child Support Services and I'm an SEIU 521 steward. When we returned to our offices, we were told that our offices were going to be safe and we would remain safe with all precautions in place. However, after three weeks of being onsite, we were told that we have a limited supply of wipes and hand sanitizers now. And they were looking to place some orders, not ordering, looking. Were safety concerns really acknowledged? When full remote access was denied and we were forced to hotel and share the same workspace with other coworkers and no longer have onsite deputies for protection, we received notification last Friday that there was an onsite exposure with the last bullet point saying, "Avoid using other coworkers' phones, desks, etc." We need to look at the safety of all county employees and not by implementing a my-way-or-highway vaccine mandate.
Our next speaker is Tina A. I've unmuted you. You'll have one minute.
My name is Tina and I'm an HSR at the Behavioral Health Department, working at the call center. First, I want to say thank you and First, I want to say thank you and I want to stand with my SEIU 521 Union Brothers and Sisters in Behavioral Health who are rallying today for our safety. Most behavioral health staff who have applied for telework have been denied. And it appears that there is a confidence issue at hand. Some managers have explained to us that the denial of the telework is due to a concern that staff will fail to ensure that client information will be secure and that HIPAA mandates are complied with. This lack of confidence is in staff by the behavioral health management is a hit on staff morale. The biggest hit is that the staff are left feeling mistrustful of management. By being unable to telework, we are not only being placed at an increased physical risk of contracting the Delta variant, but also of contracting and spreading the virus throughout the community. The behavioral health department has repeatedly expressed the importance of self-care and serving our community.
Our next speaker is Karen. I've unmuted you. Please go ahead.
Hi, my name is Karen and I am one of the clinicians from the behavioral health department. I am here to request a telework option for SEIU 521 members in order to keep workers safe and healthy while improving employee morale. Our behavioral health management have denied staff telework requests for various reasons. SEIU 521 members have served the community well for over a year. We have proven that we are capable of maintaining productivity and providing excellent client care while teleworking. Our safety and the safety of our family and the community we serve are dependent dependent on us doing our part to limit exposure. We request that the board of supervisors support the telework for staff in our community and assist in this matter. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Bee Beekman. I've unmuted you. You'll have one minute to speak.
Go ahead, Blair. Hi, Blair Beekman here. I hope we can be considering across the country the future of small plane airports placed in local neighborhoods. From this, I still feel we can close the Reed Hillview Airport in the next year and to let the airport begin to just sit for the next 10 years and to clean it of its toxins. And from this, the closed airport can be given good runway maintenance and security over the next 10 years in case of any upcoming barrier natural disasters. I hope this can be a clear picture for all of us to more openly address how to close Reed Hillview sooner. While at the same time, we can be openly developing SFA area disaster preparedness plans for the East Side community in the next two to five to 10 years as well. I also hope this can be a time of open community conversation and information about all the COVID-19 vaccines available at this time. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Aaron. I've unmuted you. Please go ahead.
My name is Aaron. I've been with the county for 23 years. And because of the draconian measures that the board of supervisors is implementing, I'm going to lose my job, lose my ability to take care of my family, pay for my home, put food on the table. I find it insulting that the county is willing to just get rid of employees for simply not wanting to engage in a medical decision. I'd like to bring it to the board's attention that when Stanford recently put out an article of data and guess who the two groups of people are that are the least vaccinated? The African-American and the Latino community, who historically have been discriminated against in this country. And yet, here we are again, actively engaging and discriminating against these people, denying them employment opportunities and denying their kids access to education. I find this extremely, extremely damaging. And I don't understand why they would want to engage in that behavior again. And also, you guys need to let us let this open to the public so you can actually see the faces of the people you're going to get rid of.
Our next speaker is Edward Strine. I've unmuted you. Please accept the unmute. You'll have one minute to speak.
Yeah, I want to say that there's over 6,000 doctors that have signed petitions saying that there should never be a lockdown. And we've got ivermectin, hydroxychloroquine. And I know for a while there, they were joking that Trump was pushing hydroxychloroquine when actually right now Trump is pushing vaccines. So we can't get political here. Doctors have said that there is a cure, ivermectin, hydroxychloroquine, and that's been around for years. And there's no serious side effects. Over 50,000 people have died from these COVID vaccines. It's ridiculous what's going on. And businesses are moving out of California. Over here on New Road in Santa Clara, there's empty buildings. People don't want to invest in California anymore because they don't know there's going to be another lockdown. This is just craziness. People are losing their jobs. People are committing suicide. Children are committing suicide because of the mask. They're breathing in their own bacteria. It's very unhealthy and making them sick. It's crazy what's going on.
Our next speaker is Tui Trong. I've unmuted you. You'll have one minute to speak. Please go ahead. I see your microphones on. Go ahead and begin.
Move on to the next person.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Kevin Jensen. I've unmuted you. You'll have one minute to speak. Please go ahead. Kevin, I see your microphones on. Would you like to begin your comments?
How's this? Is it working?
Yes.
Yes. Okay, thank you. I was moved by the adjournment in memoriam to Robert Barrett. I didn't know the man. I didn't know he was coming, but he's, from what I've heard, I would like to try to be like him. I've tried to speak out before and I've spoken before the board and the Blue Ribbon Commission, so. There will be an item coming up later I'll address, but for right now, a little history to what happened when I was the Assistant Chief of the Department of Correction and Eddie Flores was the chief. We came to really a couple tough times when budgets were cut back in the day and we were facing 7 million. Eventually, the jails were taken and given to the sheriff's office. And I think it was because of those budget cuts that were made on the correction side rather than enforcement. And it decimated the jails. I believe it's because of bad management, but I'd like to say that there's a chance to rebuild and I appreciate the board of supervisors for turning in that direction. Mental illness is a scourge, but it's it's something that needs to be treated, not treated in the jails. And I appreciate Paula Candy, but there's more to the problem. Thank you.
I'll try Tui Trong one last time. I've unmuted you. You'll have to accept the unmute and begin your comments. And we seem to be having difficulty. That concludes our public comments.
Thank you, Jess. Well, now move on to item number seven, which is approving the consent calendar. And just a heads up to everybody, we'll be doing item number 19 after item number seven. And before we start, just with you reading all the items that we have on our published consent calendar update, I just want to say that I need to recuse myself from item number 61 because of my financial interest in Facebook. Thank you, Jess. If you'll please read our consent calendar.
Thank you. We have a request from Vice President Ellenberg and Supervisor Lee to consider item numbers 10 and 28 concurrently. Item number 10 is to receive quarterly report relating to COVID-19 recovery. Item number 28 is to receive report relating to a strategic vision for American Rescue Plan Act funds. We have a request from Supervisor Chavez to add item number 11 to the consent calendar. Item number 11 is to approve referral to county council to report to the board on November 2, 2021 with options for consideration relating to supporting countywide equitable geographic distribution of emergency slash transitional housing and supportive housing to address homelessness in Santa Clara County. We have a request from Supervisor Chavez to add item number 12 to the consent calendar. Item number 12 is to approve referral to administration to report to the board on November 2, 2021 with options for consideration relating to advocacy for state legislation for provision of funding incentives to jurisdictions to build housing for the unhoused members of the community. We have a request from Supervisor Chavez to add item number 14 to the consent calendar. Item number 14 is to consider recommendations relating to the expansion of health coverage to 100 recently employed or self-employed members of the CICU collective and its related business ownership and WERIS programs. We have a request from Vice President Ellenberg to consider item number 18 after item number 19. Item number 18 is to approve referral to administration and county council to report to the board on November 16, 2021 with options for consideration relating to improving jail management and operations, appropriately sizing the jail population and alternatives to jail. Item number 19 is to adopt a resolution declaring no confidence in Sheriff Laurie Smith. We have a request from Vice President Ellenberg and Supervisors Chavez and Lee to add item number 24 to the consent calendar. Item number 24 is to consider recommendations relating to Silicon Valley Creates Fiscal Year 2020-2021 Funding for the Promotion of Arts and Culture in Santa Clara County. We have a request from Vice President Ellenberg and Supervisor Chavez to add item number 25 to the consent calendar. Item number 25 is to consider recommendations relating to grant agreement with Silicon Valley Creates to augment funding for the promotion of arts and culture in Santa Clara County. We have a request from Vice President Ellenberg and Supervisor Chavez to add item number 27 to the consent calendar. Item number 27 is to receive report relating to incorporating CalFresh and other county services into the door-to-door outreach efforts of the Community Health and Business Engagement Team. There's a correction to item number 29. The item should read as follows. Under advisement from August 25, 2020, item number 15, receive report from the Office of the County Executive, the Office of the Sheriff, the Office of the District Attorney, the Office of the Public Defender, the Office of the County Council, the Behavioral Health Services Department, the Probation Department, Emergency Medical Services, the Procurement Department, and County Communications relating to policing, use of force, and emergency response. We have a request from administration to hold item number 30 to September 14, 2021. Item number 30 is to receive report relating to communication on operational issues between the Chief of Correction and the Office of the Sheriff. We have a request from administration to hold item number 31 to September 14, 2021. Item number 31 is receive report relating to the Vietnamese-American Service Center. We have a request from administration to hold item number 32 to September 14, 2021. Item number 32 is to receive report relating to the allocation of $115,000 to support the establishment of a health equity agenda that will determine key health equity metrics and address local health disparities. We have a request from administration to hold item number 33 to September 28, 2021. Item number 33 is to receive report relating to community engagement outreach policies for housing developments. We have a request from county council to hold item number 34 to October 5, 2021. Item number 34 is to receive report relating to amendments to the County of Santa Clara Ordinance Code relating to massage establishments, massage therapists, and massage practitioners. We have a request from the clerk of the board to hold item number 37B to September 14, 2021. Item number 37B is to approve minutes of the August 17, 2021 regular meeting. We have a request from Vice President Ellenberg to remove item number 47 from the consent calendar. Item number 47 is adoption of executive salary ordinance number NS-20.21.03 and ordinance amending Santa Clara County Executive Leadership Salary Ordinance Number NS-20.21 relating to compensation of employees, increasing the flat rate salaries of the assessor, district attorney, and sheriff classifications by 4.3%. That concludes my updates.
Thank you, Jess. I appreciate that. And I see we've got one speaker. I'm going to turn to supervisors first. Supervisor Chavez, you have your hand raised.
Thank you. Thank you, President Wasserman. Item 38, this, this is about our continuum of care. And in that item, there is a reference to the welcoming and receiving center and its location. At least through Children's Family Seniors Committee, it has been reported to our, our committee that the, the final rest, the final location of the welcoming center would be connected to the Center of Excellence at O'Connor Hospital. And I want to ask for an off-agenda report from staff to either confirm that or to share what the long-term plans are for placement. Item 54, this is the universal basic.
I'm sorry, supervisor, item 54 or 64?
54.
Thank you.
This is the universal basic income. And we have 10 youth who are eligible to receive services but are not currently in the program based on funding allotted from administration. So I'd like to pull that item for discussion unless my colleagues are comfortable with us expanding the program to include the 10 youth that are eligible but are not included with a not to exceed of $50,000 over the next year. Item 26, this is the Title IX analysis, and I'd like to defer that till, until September 14. Item 37B, this is being held by staff, but I wanted to sunshine for my colleagues that I would like to request the staff include the verbatim minutes as allowed for items 36, 37, 38, and 126 from the August 16 meeting, I'm sorry, August 17, I apologize, meeting as allowed by Board Policy 3.34. And then finally, I wanted to just say on item 27, I'm very, very excited about what we're learning in our door-to-door outreach. And I wanted to commend the staff both for the pivot but for the really good report and information.
Thank you. Before I turn to the supervisor, I'm going to turn to Dr. Smith on Supervisor Chavez's request regarding item number 54. I believe she said there were 10 youth eligible. And I wondered what implications or what thoughts you had, Dr. Smith, on our handling that item at this time.
Thank you, Mr. President. The report back is a follow-up to the board's request that we start a pilot process and then decide, the board would decide later on after the pilot was completed whether to expand it. And the real question the supervisor asks is should we expand earlier than before we've completed the pilot? It's obviously the board's decision. If you want to move ahead with expanding the pilot before it's done, then I think we should ask you to reschedule the agenda item so we can come back with funding mechanisms.
Understood. Thank you. Supervisor, Vice President Ellenberg, your hand is raised. Is it raised on this item 54 or was it on something else?
It was first on something else, but now I just also want to get clarification on, on 50, 54. And, and state that I, I don't want, I'm not prepared to expand it until we get the, the data back from, from this first pilot. And I, and I don't know how that plays. Does it mean bring it back? Don't bring it back?
I think, I think it's a bring back.
Well, we can also just pull it off consent and have the discussion today. But I'm happy if the staff needs time to do a little more preparation based on the, the discussion we're having today. I would defer to Dr. Smith to let us know the answer to that.
Thank you. Supervisor Chavez, if you're fine with deferring that and Supervisor, Vice President Ellenberg, you were fine with deferring it.
Sure.
I am too. So unless there's objection, that's three already regarding item 54. Will that suffice, Dr. Smith?
Yes, then we'll come back with the board's options to either continue the pilot as first decided or to open it up and include other qualified candidates. And the board can then decide which way they want to go.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Supervisor Chavez, did you have anything else? Otherwise, Vice President Ellenberg.
Got it. Thank you so much. On item 27, I just want to, want to make a brief comment and request for a little bit of information back. Thank you very much to the staff and, and the Chabet team for your efforts in the field with the vaccination and the booster distribution, CalFresh application assistance, and rental assistance. I'd like for staff to include in the next report back some information on how the EOC closes the loop with any reports on which neighborhoods they cover and keeping BOS offices and city council offices connected to coordinate efforts to make sure we've got a two-way exchange on issues and concerns at the neighborhood level. I'm also interested in seeing trends in need among the different offerings by the Chabet program, which includes the pandemic response and recovery-related responses as well as CalFresh and rental assistance to county residents. With regard to item 42, this is a contract for anesthesiologists working at O'Connor Hospital, which is a continuation of the contract. which is a continuation of the contract for services under the prior ownership of the hospital. Recognizing that our three hospitals have a mix of county-employed physicians, contracted provider group physicians, and agreements with medical residency programs, I'd like to request an off-agenda report, please, that lays out by hospital and service line or specialty, the makeup of the physicians providing care in our system, including the number of medical providers in each of those groups. Are there any questions, Dr. Smith, about that request?
That's fine. We can get back to you on that off-agenda.
Great. Thanks so much. And finally, with regard to number forty-seven, I, I'm okay to put it back on consent, but I want to register a no vote on item forty-seven, please.
Okay, I'm looking for any other hands from Supervisors. Otherwise, I'm going to turn to Jess for public comment to Vice Smidian.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I would like to ask that item number eleven stay on our calendar as agendized. I would like to ask that item fourteen stay on our calendar as agendized. On item twenty-seven, fine with consent calendar, but I would just ask staff to be mindful of the fact as we're talking about outreach and CalFresh in particular, that District Five has been identified by our staff as the only one of the five supervisory districts with disparate under enrollment in CalFresh, and would ask that that be reflected in the effort. Item twenty-seven anticipates, and on item number forty-seven, I will be an abstention. Thank you.
All righty. With that, I, oops, Supervisor Chavez, your hand is still raised. Did you wish to speak more before we go to the public?
Yeah, I wanted to just suggest that we pull item twenty-seven off. I think what Supervisor Semidian just said is an important context issue, and since this work is primarily being done on COVID, I think it's worth having a discussion about what we would need to do to make sure that, that the areas he's concerned about are covered. So I would just suggest pulling it off.
Okay, he did not, but you wish to pull it off consent.
Yes, thank you.
Okay, that's pulled off consent. I'll now turn to Jess for our speakers.
I'm, I'm sorry Supervisor Wasserman, I would also just recommend that that be heard as part of the COVID report. So after twenty-eight, and just include it because it's all part of COVID.
Okay, hold on just a second because Jess and I got all kinds of things heard before and after right now. All right, so we've got item ten. Your request was to hear twenty-seven and twenty-eight with ten.
Mr. Chairman, could I ask that Supervisor Chavez repeat her request with respect to item thirty-seven and the minutes? It was a little bit unclear to me what the nature and extent of the request was.
Please, Supervisor Chavez.
Thank you. I was asking to include in our records verbatim minutes for thirty-six, thirty-seven, thirty-eight, and twenty-six per Board Policy three point three-four.
That was thirty-six, thirty-seven, thirty-eight.
And one-twenty-six.
And one-twenty-six. Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Chair.
Okay, Jess, I'm going to turn to you now for two minutes each for members of the public to speak on item number seven, the consent calendar.
Mr. President, could I?
Yes, Vice President.
Regarding number fifty-four, which is the transitional age youth pilot, staff recommend or reminded me that in order to continue to pay the people who are currently on the program, we need to get an approval for Section B. So might I suggest that we, the Board approve that so we can actually pay the children who are on the current program, and then we come back with an expansion proposal.
I would include that.
Thank you. That sounds fine to me as well. Thank you for catching that. All right, now Jess, we're going to you, members of the public, item number seven. And then we'll have a crisscrossing agenda, that's for sure, but we'll handle it and get it all done. Jess, go ahead.
Thank you. We'll get up a two-minute timer. Our first speaker is Tessa Woodman-C. I've unmuted you. You'll have two minutes to speak. Please go ahead.
These are on consent items.
Right. Thank you, Tessa Woodman-C. Thank you so much. Yeah, well, you mentioned COVID nineteen on your consent calendar, so I wanted to comment on that. And I did want to applaud you for reading the whole consent agenda. That is very, very good democracy standards that City of San Jose doesn't do. And so thank you for doing that and make, you know, making sure it's for the whole, you know, for everybody to understand what's going on. So we appreciate that. Getting back to COVID nineteen, the real way we can solve COVID nineteen is to shut down, shut it down for like, I guess, a month. We'd have to shut it down for a month, and we need to do that. That's what New Zealand did. They shut it down. They, they didn't have transportation coming in. They didn't have air flights. That's what caused us to have our, our climate crisis, not our climate crisis, well, that too, but our COVID crisis. And that's what New Zealand did is they shut it down, and we need to shut it down for one month, and we could, we could bring it into this, the COVID nineteen. And in addition, like my husband, the scientist biologist says, we really need to shut it down for good in terms of our climate crisis. And anything that addresses both our climate crisis and our COVID crisis is the answer, is the solution. And then when we shut it down, we need to, of course, have universal basic income, and that needs to be part of it, like Germany did. Germany made sure that everybody had two thousand dollars. That's the way we have to do it. And if we look at our military budget, we, you know, the military budget, if we really gave universal basic income to everybody, then we, that would be our, our military budget every year. And so it'd be a much better use of our military budget to do universal basic income. So really, the issue is, is we need to shut it down so we don't have to make the, the draconian choices to take a, the vaccines and all the issues that we're having to do to keep capitalism and consumerism going. That is really the, the emphasis, and that needs to stop. And we need to rethink this whole project.
Thank you. And Jess, before you go to your next speaker, Supervisor Chavez, your hand is still raised. Did you wish to make a comment?
Sorry.
Nope, go ahead, Jess. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Bee Beekman. I've unmuted you. You'll have two minutes. Please go ahead.
Hi, this is Blair Beekman. I hope you can hear me okay. Great. Please correct me if I'm wrong on this. I would like to speak on item sixteen for the consent calendar, the BTA issues, victim issues. Thank you very much for this issue.
And Blair, we will be hearing item sixteen?
On the regular agenda.
So, yes, sir. So you can speak on that one.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Paul Soto. I've unmuted you. Please go ahead.
Yeah, Paul Soto from the horseshoe. My head is still spinning. I, I don't, the way, how quickly you switch and turn and add this and subtract that and wow, I mean, I, I'm good, but I'm not that good in terms of being able to like put everything in alignment. However, I would like to speak to the siting policies. I know the history of San Jose. I know the history of California. I've lived it. I'm still living it. I still have not recovered from it. I'm a Chicano. And what that means is the farm workers movement, the lowrider movement, the Chicano movement, the protest at San Jose State University in nineteen sixty-eight, when the Chicano said, "Chale, you know what? We're going to have our own commencement." You know, a couple months later, Tommy Smith and Juan Carlos lifted their fists. Also, they removed their shoes to show solidarity with the poor. So in their body, they stated that a man is to use his strength, which is symbolized by the fist raised, to form solidarity for the poor, people that have no strength. And so these histories have not been properly articulated within county and city government policy. I'd like to help in that endeavor. I, I really can. Believe me, I can. All I do all day long is study, research, write essays, and, and come to these meetings. That's all I do. I get paid not, not a dime, not one dime. I'm glad that the promotoras on, on the east side, that they're going to get like medical benefits. But you see, they have access to Cindy Chavez. I don't. The South Bay, South Bay Councilwoman, she's got access to Cindy Chavez. I don't. You know, there's, there's a lot of people that have access to the politicians that are getting left out because they don't have direct access to the politicians that have the power.
Our next speaker is Scott Largent. I've unmuted you. You'll have two minutes to speak.
Thank you, everybody. Good morning, Scott Largent. I'm getting, well, pretty excited about item number sixty. Putting the shelter hotline in the hands of the Bill Wilson Center is going to be a big win for our community. The existing shelter hotline, I'm really, really not impressed. You know, basically, I started following up on a lot of things, asking places to go for cars, motor homes, you know, all of the above. I got numbers. I got emails. You know, I contacted different nonprofits, and nothing materialized at all. They said things were shut down. There's not enough room, you know, blah, blah, blah. We are technically customers. So I know for a fact that the Bill Wilson Center, Sparky Harlem, will treat me like a customer in a way, will follow up on the questions that I have, will figure out some type of place to go. And at the end of the day, if it's just there's really, really no options, I think that support will still be there. And I worry that the county hotline, I was surprised they didn't even want to get contact information. That kind of blew my mind, or even just, you know, probe a little more, start asking, okay, so you're in an RV, you know, what's the registration situation like? You know, how are things going? Where are you located at? I mean, that's what I would do. I'd get out that fishing line. I mean, I would figure it out. You know, everybody has individual needs. The City of San Jose right now, they crashed and burned on a safe parking program. I was on a couple of meetings yesterday. There are no options for RVs, and sending this out for a request for quote or an RFP, that can take three months. That can take six months. These people don't have that time. There's no other options for them to go other than into neighborhoods. And they will end up down at your county building. It's the closest restroom. It's the closest Wi-Fi, and it's basically the only other option. So they're going to be in your front yard. So thank you.
Our next speaker is Trina. I've unmuted you. Please go ahead. Trina Maureen, please accept the unmute. We will come back. Our next speaker is Liz Lacy. I've unmuted you. You'll have two minutes to speak.
Hi, good morning. Liz Lacy here, Sheriff's Office, APT Vice Chair and Chief Steward for SEIU Local Flag Two-One. That was definitely really confusing with the consent calendar changes. I was really trying to keep up with it. So I hope I am on the right mark here, but number twenty, I think, is directly relevant to number nineteen, which will hopefully we'll be discussing soon here. I, I think that really is the crux of the issue with the Department of Corrections. It doesn't solely lie on just the sheriff's shoulders, but it also is Jeff's responsibility as well as your responsibility to ensure that we have the proper programs for our community, including inmates, reentry, juvenile justice. So I would personally think that, not just for myself, but the public would want to hear that as it sounds like it directly relates. And second, in some of our meetings with Labor Relations, as it regards to COVID, I think we really need to have a town hall with Sarah Cody and a person from CDC because I hear a lot of wrong information being put out there, and as a scientist, it kills me because like the DNA altering thing, it doesn't happen. And so I think like maybe we can engage the community as well as workers to try to convince them or re-educate them on some of the misleading information that they may have heard. So I really strongly encourage the Board to consider that. Thank you so much.
Our next speaker is Nick Kuata. You'll have two minutes. Please go ahead.
Thank you very much, and I do apologize, Board Supervisors and President Wasserman. I do echo some of the same sentiments by some of the previous speakers on confusion in terms of what the items are on consent and what's not on consent. I, I do apologize. Just making sure that item twenty-eight will be heard on the regular agenda because we do have a pretty large contingent of speakers lined up for you to really express some of the same sentiments at the FTOC meeting and a little bit more expanding in terms of the conversation that we held. So I do apologize if that is off mark, but I just, just wanted to flag that. Thank you.
And Nick, twenty-eight will be heard with ten, which will be after one o'clock today.
Go ahead.
And we will try Trina Maureen one more time. Please accept the unmute. You'll have two minutes to speak. Trina, your microphone is still muted. And we'll move on. Our next speaker is Ruben. I've unmuted you. You'll have two minutes to speak. Please go ahead.
I, I just had a question on, on when there was some changes there to the agenda between items twenty-six, thirty-six, et cetera. There was a reference to an item one-twenty-six, which I did not see in the agenda. Could you clarify on that? That's all my question is right now.
Item one-twenty-six. We don't have an item one-twenty-six. All right, next speaker. Supervisor Chavez, did you have a comment on one-twenty-six?
Item one-twenty-six is in reference to our last board meeting, and that was one of the Reed Hillview items. Supervisor Wasserman, that was your item. So it, it was relative to thirty-seven B, and item twenty-one-twenty-six was referenced as in that item that is being deferred.
In thirty-seven, you're saying?
Thirty-seven B, that's correct.
Thirty-seven B is being deferred. Thank you for that clarification. All right, Jess.
Our next speaker is Molly M. I've unmuted you. You'll have two minutes. Please go ahead.
Good morning. My name is Molly McLeod, and I am calling about accessibility. As somebody who is participating in this meeting, I joined. I know that there's issues that I want to speak on sometime on the agenda, but I can't tell what point we're on, and I heard confusion from previous speakers. One of the ways to address this need would be instead of just having the speaking countdown, actually have the items with a short description. Zoom has improved so that now apps like a countdown can be put on there where you, in addition, have relevant information. I think this would be helpful for everybody who wants to be engaged in democracy and participate. The other part that I've noticed improvements, for example, the Reed Hillview meeting that was mentioned had ASL, American Sign Language interpreters for the first time that I've seen in meetings, and I had friends commenting on that going yay for the progress, which is very wonderful. And there wasn't the awareness of the spotlighting practice. It was a needing to send texts and, and get messages relayed about that. Similarly, when interpreters change out to be pausing so that that can happen without losing content. And then at the end of the meeting, there were no ASL interpreters as the meeting went really long. There are a number of exceptional practices.
Molly, just one moment. Jess, if you could please stop Molly's time. Just stop it at thirty seconds. Molly, are you still there?
Yes, I'm here, still here, Supervisor Wasserman.
Thank you. For you and everyone else, I understand your confusion as far as things moved around a lot and being heard together. I'll give you what you're asking for right now, and that is that after this item, we're going to go to item number nineteen, then eighteen, then eight, we'll be breaking for lunch, and then it will be nine, ten, twenty-seven, and twenty-eight. That's what's going on. And Jess, as far as the the closed caption, do we have that available?
We do have that available on our broadcast feed.
Okay, thank you. So Molly, that's available on our broadcast feed each and every time, time. The sign language was a special one for that humongous prior meeting, but we do have the closed caption available each and every meeting. Molly, please continue. You've got thirty seconds left.
This is Molly. Thank you, Supervisor Wasserman. This is Molly. Thank you, Supervisor Wasserman. I'm Benny Fudding from the automated Zoom captions now, and I'm one of the people who'd requested that they go on regularly and have appreciated the consistency of that practice. There are other access skills that need to be developed and used throughout the county and offices, and I hope that additional resources will be put toward that. And thank you again for clarifying where we are. That should also be able to be displayed for those of us who are watching. Thanks.
Thank you. All right.
We'll try Trina one last time. Thank you.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Oh, great. Sorry, I think I'm a little bit technology confused. I'm asking to speak on item twenty-eight, section B.
And Molly, we're gonna be, you said item twenty-eight-two-eight.
This is Trina.
Oops, I'm sorry, Trina. You said item two-eight.
Yes, I did.
Yes, item two-eight will be heard with number ten, and that will be heard after lunch.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
And that concludes our requests.
Thank you, Jess. I appreciate that. And I'll just repeat my recusal of item sixty-one. Supervisors, any other comments to make or amendments or changes? Otherwise, we'll go ahead and leave all that sorting out to the clerks. Jess, I think I've got the numbers right, but please jump on me anytime that I screw up.
Thank you.
I'll look for a motion.
I will move approval of the consent calendar.
Thank you. Thank you, Supervisor Lee. Any further discussion? Seeing none, roll call vote, please.
Apologies. Could I ask for clarification on fifty-four? Are we deferring A to nine-fourteen?
Yes.
And approving B?
That's correct.
Thank you very much. For the roll call vote, Supervisor Lee?
Aye.
Supervisor Chavez?
Yes.
Supervisor Semidion?
Aye.
Vice President Ellenberg? Pardon, you are muted. Vice President Ellenberg?
Sorry, yes, with the exception of item forty-seven.
Thank you. President Wasserman?
Yes, as well. Thank you. Now, we're gonna move on to, and just to refresh what I said a few minutes ago, we're gonna handle nineteen, then eighteen, then eight. Presumably, then break for lunch, then come back to nine, ten, twenty-seven, twenty-eight. And the reason there's some of those jumps is because of requests that were made to hear items together. So with that, we will go to item number nineteen. Excuse me one second. And Supervisors Semidion and Ellenberg, your comments first. Then we'll hear from the sheriff, then we'll hear from the public, then we'll come back to Supervisors Semidion and Ellenberg.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Appreciate your effort to accommodate folks and the public. So I think what I'd like to do is simply move approval of the recommended action on item nineteen, which is to adopt a resolution declaring no confidence in Sheriff Lori Smith. And the resolution is, of course, contained in our published packet, beginning at packet page one-fifty-three. Why don't I see if there is a second? If so, I will speak only very briefly, and then hear from folks, as you've indicated, and then speak more extensively a little later in the agenda.
Thank you. Oh, I was gonna say, turn to Vice President. She just seconded the motion. Thank you. And for her to speak on this item, please register to vote now. Supervisor Semidion, did you have an additional comment?
Only to say, Mr. Chairman, I know this is a an unprecedented act. It is not one that I came to lightly. But as is indicated in six, seven pages of very detailed and extensively documented resolution language, this is a pattern of conduct that is years and years in its import. It is clearly conduct that is unbecoming of a public official, conduct that is unbecoming of a law enforcement official, and conduct that is particularly unbecoming in a law enforcement leader. People have asked, what is the import of a vote of no confidence? I will simply say, my hope is that, since it's among the very few tools we do have, that it generates a change in behavior. We simply cannot let these behaviors continue. And at some point, we have an obligation as the governing body to simply speak up and call out this behavior as unacceptable. I came on this board back in 2013, just a couple of months before Supervisor Shirakawa was indicted on a dozen criminal counts. And I remember how frustrated members of the public were and how much criticism the prior board came under for simply staying silent, looking the other way, failing to speak up, calling out the bad behavior when they saw it. Given the years and years and years of conduct that is described in the resolution, I don't think our board can or should be in that position today. And that's why I have respectfully submitted this proposal with Supervisor Allenberg and why I hope that a majority of our board will support a vote of no confidence today. I'll speak more extensively at the appropriate time. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Supervisor Ellenberg, I have your second. I cut you off. Did you have any other comments to make at this time?
I don't. Thanks so much. I believe the language in the resolution speaks for itself.
Okay, Sheriff Smith, I'm gonna have you on next. You'll have a ten-minute limit, please, Jess, and then we'll go to the public.
First of all, I'm hoping that ten minutes is enough. This is very important to me. Last time you limited me to five. I won't take an hour, but I would like additional time. So I do hope that Supervisor Semidion is not comparing me to Supervisor Shirakawa in his criminal indictments. But let me begin with addressing this issue. Dorothea Dix, a name that many of you don't know. She was a strong woman in eighteen forty-nine, and she began teaching in the jails. She was an author, a teacher, and a reformer. She was appalled when she witnessed the treatment of those with mental health issues in the jails. Her efforts on behalf of mentally ill prisoners really helped create dozens of new institutions across the United States and Europe and changed people's perception of those population. She accomplished much. Why are we where we are now? Hasn't history really taught us anything? This was an outspoken, an outspoken and strong woman. How difficult that must have been in eighteen forty-one. I continue to talk about the travesty of how mental health people are treated in jail. Not only in the jails where we are ill-equipped to deal with not only high-security, dangerous people, but alongside of those people are those that need safety, security, and help. Using the jail as a mental health facility is not only wrong, but it's inhumane. This is not, this is not just a jail problem. It reaches all parts of law enforcement. The emergency psychiatric unit at Valley Medical Center is inadequate. When cops take someone to EPS, they're generally released quickly from that facility, and the problem continues. We in law enforcement know that the only alternative to treatment is booking a person into jail where they can receive some level of care at the same time solving the problem that existed within the family unit or on the streets. This is wrong. We need alternatives. All of law enforcement is frustrated. How do you expect us to deal with people with mental health illnesses in the criminal justice system when we don't have alternatives? I think three of you know what's happening in the real world, those that listen to people on the streets. The others want to place blame for a problem that they are not addressing. Homelessness and mental health is an epidemic, and you're closing your eyes and looking for someone to blame other than yourselves for failing to address the problem. Currently, we have forty-seven people in custody who will stay in jail until a treatment bed becomes available. This is a low number. Sometimes that number is as many as a hundred. They don't belong in jail, yet some wait months. They clearly need treatment, not jail. We also have many who are in the hamster wheel of competency proceedings, and they may never emerge. Why are charges not dismissed on low-level offenders in custody? The county and the criminal justice system apparently has decided that jails is the proper place, and I disagree. Why is the district attorney filing charges on someone who on June twenty-eighth was arrested for disturbance, vandalism, and trespassing? He is seriously mentally ill, yet he's in jail waiting for a treatment bed. If law enforcement had an alternative to jail, he'd be getting treatment now. His lawyer had no choice but to plead him guilty to these charges. And the reason, most often, as I understand it, is you have to have a guilty plea to be able to be entered into the mental health court arena. This is completely unnecessary. When a person pleads guilty, it creates a whole new sense of problems because their rap sheet doesn't show that they had mental illness. It shows that they've been convicted as a criminal. That is wrong, and there are major life implications that they will have to deal with, and they never deserve to be in the criminal justice system to begin with. I'm a very, very strong victim advocate, and don't get me wrong. There are many people in jail with serious mental illness who are charged with serious and violent crimes. But I believe, had they had treatment prior to committing what act they were alleged to have committed, we wouldn't have a victim. We may not have a victim of a violent crime. You may think that you're addressing the problem, but you aren't. You pride yourselves in being a progressive county. A study by the California Hospital Association in 2018 showed dismal figures for our county. This is from a board of supervisors that really is progressive. Of the nine counties with populations over a million, we had the third lowest number of acute care inpatient beds per hundred thousand a population. Only Contra Costa County and Riverside County had few, fewer, but that's not the whole story. We have less than half the beds per capita than Sacramento County. Also, we have fewer than thirteen beds per hundred thousand population. San Francisco has thirty-six point six beds per hundred thousand population. We estimate that twenty-five percent of the jail population is seriously mentally ill or SMI. In addition, there's a number of high-functioning inmates that have some mental health diagnosis. The tragic incidents involving both Mr. Tyree and Mr. Hogan were seriously mentally ill, and they were in jail on minor charges awaiting treatment beds. I'm a law enforcement officer, not a trained psychiatrist. Our staff does an exceptional job, not only in the jail but on the streets. We do a lot of training, but no amount of training can replace the need for trained professionals in the area of mental health. We're proud of our two patrol teams where we team a clinician with a deputy, and they've done great things and have many successes, but that's only a Band-Aid. The root cause is mental illness. I began saying to you that mental health people should be in hospital. The county jail should not be used as a mental health hospital, which is what the board has asked of me. You tasked me with being your Band-Aid. Now you're placing blame, not taking responsibility. Joe apparently needs to find a person to blame for inadequacies and instead of addressing the real problem, the root cause of the problem. You are responsible first acknowledging there's a problem and then understanding that you must deal with the problem. It's a public health crisis, not a criminal justice crisis. But instead, you're placing blame. How does that help? Where do we go from here? And I have some suggestions, and I think I can do it in two minutes, but I'm going to ask that I get some more time. So this county, in their inaction, really has criminalized mental health and dumped the problem on the sheriff's office in the jails. In my opinion, people with mental health issues are prosecuted more vigorously than others. Recently, the defense attorneys, the district attorney, and the court decided to delete two-hundred-and-fifty-four sentences of people who'd been convicted of crimes. This is crazy and does not address the real issue. This was not taking care of the mental health. If you want to reduce the jail population, start with those that do not belong in jail because of their mental health issues. Develop alternatives. Don't delete jail time for those convicted of crimes. People suffering from mental illness should be hospitalized and treated, not arrested in jail. We at the sheriff's office are the least responsible for who's in jail. This is determined by the district attorney seeking prosecution, the defense lawyers whose hands are tied in getting their client treatment, and the courts who are the only entity that can sentence or release someone from custody. And they are also desperately seeking alternatives to jail. You, the Board of Supervisors, has already spent seventy million dollars in your quest for a new jail. Of this money, nine million dollars alone was sent on the concept design. And yes, if you don't address the real problem here of mental health, we do need a jail, a new jail, but enough is enough. The estimate for a new jail is a staggering amount of three-hundred-and-ninety million dollars for five-hundred-and-thirty-five beds. Do not build a jail. Instead, build a meaningful psychiatric hospital. Address the problem. You've already wasted seventy million dollars on the project so far. Do not waste another three-hundred-and-ninety million on a jail. Build a hospital, not a jail. Divert the three-hundred-and-ninety million dollars earmarked for the jail and build that psychiatric hospital. The same study in 2018 determined that we need an additional nine-hundred-and-sixty beds. That three-hundred-and-ninety million dollars would go away for what we need. Instead of a jail with three-hundred-and-thirty-five beds, build a safe and humane psychiatric hospital to at least meet the increasing need for mental health treatment. I have embraced police reforms, and we have, independent of outside influence, made many necessary changes. In fact, Semidion has on today's agenda as number twenty-nine a report on our progress.
And Sheriff? I'm gonna stop you there for a moment. I'm gonna hear from the public. We'll go back to the supervisors, then we'll come back to you.
Thank you.
The one minute each for our speakers, please, Jess.
Killed Peggy's timer. There we go. Our first speaker is Kevin Jensen. I've unmuted you. You'll have one minute to speak. The timer will start when you begin speaking.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. You know, we agree on a couple of things, the sheriff and I, and I've known her for quite a long time. We've worked together since, I think, eighty-six, eighty-seven. It is a scourge to treat mental illness as a crime, as I said before. But the jails are not a solution, but when they are there, it's our duty to care, and that can only be done if the atmosphere has been ethical, that the longstanding unethical retaliatory leadership that's been going on, which I've testified to before the Blue Ribbon Commission, which they had to get people to talk under, you know, even jail correction officers didn't want to talk unless their identities were protected. I think what we have to do is accept responsibility. There's time for change. I wish Lori Smith no ill will. I wish her to move on and allow the jails to heal. We had a good jail system with some dysfunction, like there always will be when I was the Assistant Chief. We need to get back to ethics. We need to get back to doing the things we have to do to protect people. And yes, let's get mental illness dealt with before we get to the jails, but if they're there, there are ours to care for. Thank you.
And Jess, I misspoke previously as far as the order. After our public speakers are going, then we'll return to the sheriff. That will conclude the public portion, then we'll go to the supervisors. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Scott Largent. I've unmuted you. Please go ahead.
Thank you. Good morning, everyone. Scott Largent. Supervisors, you guys are just barking up the wrong tree on this one. I've been attending these meetings way, way, way too long, and this is not the sheriff's problem right here. You guys don't even have a dignified psych ward. Your behavioral health system is literally beating a dead horse. That thing was shut down through the entire pandemic. I watch, I witness this stuff, I advocate for these people, and you guys are just gonna go like you always do, go blame it on the sheriff. When anything goes wrong, go blame it on Lori Smith. You guys need to look in the mirror, or you need to look out your window at the mentally ill people that need adequate care, that are in traffic, they're butt naked, they're smoking meth, they're screaming, they're yelling, and like Lori said, they need real care. And you guys knew what was going on for a very long time. You even have your staff on here from behavioral health, needing help, needing more clinicians, begging for your help. Big Daddy Joe, you made a...
Our next speaker is Tessa Woodman-C. I've unmuted you. You'll have one minute. Please go ahead. Our next speaker is Tessa Woodman-C, I've unmuted you, you'll have one minute, please go ahead.
Yes, Tessa Woodman-C, I appreciate Sheriff Lori Smith talking about mental health. And I, you know, feel that like my son who ran for city council, Marshal Woodman-C says, if we solve climate crisis, we will solve all our issues. And the one thing I see is that we need to turn our swords into plowshares and we need to have nature be the healing and we need to do the the work that Alory Middlebrook is working on to grow, to learn and grow, grow food locally and that we do need to turn our swords into plowshares and have nature be the healing and to work on having food growing urban sustainability. And that's where, you know, it's a salve to the, you know, nature is the salve, food is the salve. We need to heal the pains and sufferings that we're all feeling and that we need to get back to basics and learn to provide those things where we give people agency to provide those.
Our next speaker is Liz Lacy, please go ahead.
Hi, good afternoon, morning, not sure. What the public needs to know is that the responsibility does not only rest on Sheriff Lori Smith, but also Jeff Smith who took over control in 2018. But it's also your responsibility as the board of supervisors to provide the best care and treatment and conditions at Department of Corrections. And you haven't done that, we've had chronic staffing shortages, high turnover rates, behavior health, Scott Largent is correct. It doesn't exist, it's below skeleton crew. So how are you going to manage the mental health of inmates when you have none? Uh, yeah, that's a problem, you have mass retirements, work that's having to be done by people who aren't qualified. You need to do an overhaul and look at yourself, take some of those huge properties that you bought and hey, let's start getting institutionalized, yay.
Our next speaker is Paul Soto, you'll have one minute, please go ahead.
With all due respect Sheriff Smith, my name is Paul Soto and I'm from the horseshoe. Your first words out of your mouth was, you don't know how important this is to me. Okay, I have heard for the last 10 minutes, a complete lack of humility. You have absolutely no humility, absolutely none. You don't deserve to be in that position. I have spent 36 years of my life in that jail. Every single one of those years I was spent there. My number is CHT 143, my PFN, that's my PFN. And you, I have seen D-Team, I've seen them put the Kevlar gloves on and I've seen them beat and I've been one of those victims. You have absolutely no clue what it is that you have done to people like me, absolutely none. You don't deserve that position and you'll be lucky if you leave with your pension, which I'm going to ask that it be removed from you because you are undeserving of a pension, you are deserving of being even called a human being, out.
Our next speaker is Paula Canny, I've unmuted you, please go ahead. Paula, please accept the unmute to turn your microphone on. We'll come back.
Is it work?
Yes.
Okay, hi, my name is Paula Canny, I'm a lawyer, I've practiced law for 41 years in California in all roles. Deputy District Attorney, Indigent Defense Lawyer, Judge Pro Tem, Criminal Defense Lawyer. I'm also the lawyer that sued the county on behalf of the Sisters of Michael Tyree, Andy Hogan and many others. This board of supervisors proposal of non, no confidence vote on the sheriff, on Sheriff Smith, shows to me just how little you understand about jail operations and the county criminal justice system. Santa Clara County, like so many other counties, completely failed to address the problem of mental illness in the jails. Mental illness is a public health crisis, not a criminal justice problem. Flaming the sheriff misses the point. You have a duty to build a hospital. I have confidence in Sheriff Smith, I urge you to vote in support of her.
Our next speaker is Tina Brown, I've unmuted you, please go ahead.
Good morning, this is Tina Brown. I live in District One, I am a system impacted family member and advocate with Silicon Valley debug and a member of the Care First Jail Last Coalition. I'm calling in to show support of item number 19. I believe that systemic racism, inhumane jail conditions, brutality and murder in the jail and the many allegations of the sheriff will not end unless the sheriff is no longer in office and that the care of the jail no longer falls under the power of one person and that there is a definite call for the complete stop to the construction of a new jail. Thank you for your time.
Our next speaker is Leslie Ziger, I've unmuted you, please go ahead.
Hi, I'm Leslie Ziger, resident of District Five, member of Serge at Sacred Heart and the Care First Jail Last Coalition. While I support the no confidence vote in the sheriff by the board for the reasons outlined in the resolution, I want to highlight that the systemic racism and dehumanization inherent to incarceration won't be, but won't be solved by removing just one person. For that reason, I support the referrals in Agenda Item 18 to explore options to reduce incarceration in our county and increase alternatives. I urge the board to vote to definitively stop construction of the new jail and urge the county to prioritize the ideas and perspectives of system impacted people as the county plans and implements community based, non-carceral alternatives to a jail, thank you.
Our next speaker is Lauren Renaud, you'll have one minute to speak, please go ahead.
Hello, my name is Lauren Renaud with Serge on the Care First Coalition. I'm surprised to hear myself say this, but I agree with a lot of what the sheriff just said. We do need to address underlying issues and not keep warehousing people in jails. Do not waste another 390 million, build a hospital or other alternatives instead of a jail. This is a great reminder about what we're going to discuss on Agenda Number 18 to reduce incarceration. At the same time, two things can be true at once. The sheriff is correct, the jail is not the right place for many people and there also are valid corruption concerns against the sheriff that should be taken seriously. While this is still the system we have today, the sheriff was responsible for people and their care and that has not been happening, thank you.
Our next speaker is Allison Cormick, please go ahead.
Good morning supervisors, I'm here today speaking in my individual capacity as a person who lives in Santa Clara County, not as a council member, nor on behalf of the city of Palo Alto. Over the years, I've read about multiple ethically troubling allegations against Sheriff Lori Smith and I'm further dismayed by the sheriff's failure to cooperate with the county auditor. Others have far more information on the operations of our jail and I defer to their assessment of the sheriff's concerning performance in that arena. I sincerely appreciate the board considering this significant action and ask you to support this unfortunately necessary resolution.
Our next speaker is Molly M, I've unmuted you, please go ahead.
Good morning, my name is Molly McLeod and I am from District Four. I am a system impacted family member, a surger and have benefited from Silicon Valley debug. I am in support of the Care First Jail Last Coalition and support item number 18 to decrease the jail population and increase alternatives to incarceration and item 19. The sheriff is the leader of the sheriffs and when I hear about the lack of deputies being immunized, when I see and hear at meeting after meeting after meeting, the lack of responsiveness to the board of supervisors' requests for information about the quality of services, all of that just shows that this is a stone in the road that needs to be removed, thank you.
Our next speaker is Karen Matzeweta, I've unmuted you, you'll have one minute to speak.
Hi, my name is Karen Matzeweta from District Three in San Jose and I'm a member of Serge at Sacred Heart and the Care First Jails Last Coalition also. We and I support both number 18 to decrease the jail population and increase non-carceral, community based alternatives to incarceration for many of the reasons that the sheriff has just outlined and more, as well as I support item number 19 and that we and I believe that systemic racism, inhumane jail conditions, brutality in the jail and the many allegations of the sheriff will not end unless the care of the jail no longer falls under the power of one person and there is a complete stop to the construction of a new jail and the current sheriff is no longer in office, thank you.
Our next speaker is Jose Vae, please go ahead. Jose Vae, please accept the unmute, you'll have one minute to speak. We'll come back to Jose, our next speaker is Andrew Bigelow. Please accept the unmute, you'll have one minute to speak.
Hi, my name is Andrew Bigelow, I'm an organizer of Silicon Valley debug and I work with a lot of families who have loved ones in the county jail. I do think that mental health is is a issue that needs to be addressed in this county outside of incarceration. And I do not think that we should build a jail and that we should invest $390 million into alternatives to incarceration and decarcerate. At the same time, I think it is flabbergasting to for Sheriff Lori Smith to act like the culture of her office in the sheriff department is not in direct responsibility to the treatment of the people who are inside right now, including those who have mental health concerns and we support the no confidence vote of Sheriff Lori Smith. And for those who have survived the treatment, they're left with the trauma of having to deal and survive the treatment of sheriff's office.
Our next speaker is Catherine Hedges, I've unmuted you, please go ahead.
Good morning, my name is Catherine Hedges, I'm with Serge and people acting in community together. And I agree with the previous callers. We should not be treating people's mental illness in a jail, we should not. You know, I don't think a big central psychiatric facility is the answer either, there needs to be community based treatment that is less intimidating to people, it needs to be culturally appropriate. But the system we have now is just so obviously a continuation of the slave patrol legacy of criminal so-called justice in the United States. And we cannot just build a new jail and say, oh, we're going to have mental health treatment because people should not be in jail to get mental health treatment, that's ridiculous, they need to be getting treatment and not going to jail and.
Our next speaker is Melissa, I've unmuted you, you'll have one minute to speak, please go ahead.
Hello, my name is Melissa and I am calling in support of the no confidence vote for the sheriff. I believe that she should take responsibility. Regardless, no one needs to die inside of a jail, even though people have mental health issues, like everyone should be cared for, including those who don't have mental health issues, there should be alternatives to incarceration that are tailored for everyone. We believe that systemic racism, inhumane jail conditions, brutality in the jail and many allegations of the sheriff will not end unless the sheriff is no longer in office. The care of the jail no longer falls under the power of one person and there is complete stop to the construction of a new jail, thank you for your time.
Our next speaker is Connor Crinian, I've unmuted you, please go ahead.
Good morning supervisors, my name is Connor Crinian, I live in District One in South San Jose. I am a member of Serge at Sacred Heart and I'm speaking today in support of the Care First Jail Last Coalition. I support Agenda Item 18 to decrease the jail population and increase alternatives to incarceration. I also support item 19 because systemic racism, inhumane jail conditions and the ongoing brutality in the jail will not end unless the sheriff is no longer in office. The care of the jail no longer falls under the power of just one person and there is a complete stop to the construction of a new jail, thank you.
Our next speaker is Sam. I've unmuted you, please go ahead.
Hi, my name is Sam, I'm South San Jose. Right now, I don't think that Lori Smith's job should be taken away because of anything having to do with the jails, I think her job should be taken away because she's comically corrupt. Have we forgotten about the concealed carry permit bribery scandal? I haven't. We can't have Lori Smith running the jail when she's on the verge of indictment and I for one think that Lori Smith pointing the finger at the DA's office is comical considering she's at risk of being indicted by the very same DA's office. I think that's a bit too politically convenient for me to accept as a good faith argument and I will yield the remainder of my time, thank you.
Our next speaker is B. Beekman, please go ahead.
Hi, this is Blair Beekman here. We've been dealing with some issues of Sheriff Smith, it's been difficult for her to share information easily for a few years now. The work of the OIR, OIR group, they've been asking some important questions of her, she has been in trouble answering and I feel the Surveillance and Technology Ordinance ideas can really help all sides in that process to make it easier for all of us. With 30 seconds remaining, it's really my feeling that there's underlying issues about the VTA here involved and the issues at Gilroy. These are bureaucratic practices we really have to address for our future, we have to prepare for this sort of emergency situations better in the future, all of us do, all sides. Good luck how you do this, it's not just on Lori Smith's fault, as much as she has to accept some blame, we have to be working better bureaucratic practices as local government, thank you.
Our next speaker is William Armeline, I've unmuted you, you'll have one minute.
Hi all, this is Will Armeline, I'm the Director of the Human Rights Institute at San Jose State University and the Criminal Justice Chair for NBLACP of San Jose and Silicon Valley, a member of Silicon Valley debug and we as an institute are also members of the Care First Jail Last Coalition. Calling in support of items 18 and 19 specifically to support non-carceral, carceral alternatives for those suffering from mental illness and other illnesses and those awaiting trial that do not pose a threat to the public. According to human rights standards, those populations need to be held in the least restrictive and most helpful environments possible and we believe those are non-carceral. We also agree, given the record, that we were part of sort of documenting in the jails and elsewhere. We feel that the scrutiny of the board of the sheriff's office under item 19 is legitimate and our organization supports that move and appreciates it from the board, thank you.
Our next speaker is Jose Vae, I've unmuted you, please accept the unmute, you'll have one minute to speak, the timer will start when you begin speaking.
Hi, this is Jose Vae from Silicon Valley debug, I agree with the sheriff, we need to stop criminalizing mental health needs and we do not need a new jail, what I don't agree with is folks that are in max security or in pre-trial for serious and violent crimes that they do not deserve dignity, they absolutely do. If we are to end systemic racism, inhumane jail conditions, brutality in the jail and many allegations of the sheriff will not end unless the sheriff is no longer in office, the care of the jail no longer falls under one person and there is a complete stop to the construction of a new jail. The sheriff's allegations and the culture of her department is only a product of a carceral system of punishment. I'm also supporting Agenda Item Number 18 to decrease the jail population and increase alternatives to incarceration, thank you for your time.
Our next speaker is Kristy Connors, I've unmuted you, please go ahead.
Yes, hi, Kristy Connors here. I, I'm really surprised, there's been a lot of people speaking out against jail time for individuals and I'd like some alternatives, if they're not going to be put in jail, if they've, if they've broken the law, I'd like people to come out and say what they think we should do with people who are breaking the law. Unfortunately, there's a lot of violence in San Jose, there's a lot of petty theft and now our police officers are having to run around, arrest people, they have nowhere to put them and crime is on the rise. It's not safe for my kids to be outside at night in most areas and I, it's really sad that San Jose has become this because growing up here, I mean, it was a safe city and now crime is on the rise and all people want to do is let people out of jail. And it's really sad to hear that because I think we need to enforce the laws we have on the books. And it's really sad to hear that because I think we need to enforce the laws we have on the books. If people do things that would put them in jail, they should be in jail. And it has nothing to do with their color of their skin. It has to do with their actions. Thank you.
And Jess, before you go on to the next person, I just want to remind people we're on Item 19. I would ask that all those people that spoke on 18, don't speak again on 18, which we're going to after this one. I understand that there's a presumed relationship between the sheriff and the jails. I understand that, but these are two separate issues. I would ask remaining speakers to speak on 19, or if they want to speak on 18, to simply say they don't need to speak now and wait to speak on 18. Thank you, Jess. Please continue.
Our next speaker is Ron Hanson. I've unmuted you. Please go ahead.
Good morning, supervisors. My name is Ron Hanson. I'm a member of District Three. As the beginning of the background to this resolution or this item states, organization culture flows from the top. And it indicates if the sheriff is at the top of the culture, things that happen in the jail ultimately flow down from there. The the other thing is that, as we have heard many times, the buck stops here. Apparently, on the sheriff's desk, it says the buck stops someplace else. That's really unfortunate. Lastly, no cooperation with Oaklim has been and continues to be a serious issue with respect to oversight of the whole operation. For that, these reasons, I urge you to unanimously approve the resolution of no confidence in Sheriff Laurie Smith. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Richard Mellinger. I've unmuted you. You'll have one minute.
Good morning, members of the Board of Supervisors. I would say that Sheriff Laurie's tenure has been a scandal, but in fact, it has been several scandals. We knew that enough was enough five years ago. We are well past enough is enough. It is long overdue between the behavior, the horrific situation in the jails, the fact that the sheriff is under indictment for selling concealed weapon permits. I mean, my God. What's it going to take? I respectfully urge the Board of Supervisors to support the vote of no confidence. Thank you very much. I yield my time.
That concludes our requests.
Thank you, Jess. Members, we're going to now return to Sheriff Smith. You'll have up to 10 minutes. That will then conclude the public portion and will then turn to the board for discussion and a vote.
Thank you. To continue, you know, we really have embraced police reform. And independently of outside influences, we've really made many necessary changes. In fact, on today's agenda, Semidion has something on law enforcement reform. And we disagree with one of his actions and one of his recommendations and one of the recommendations of OIR, which is the civilian oversight group. And by the way, I have signed a confidentiality, I mean, an information sharing agreement with Oaklim that was done in October. And and I don't know why people keep saying that I'm not cooperating. It has not been signed by OIR. In fact, for civilian oversight, I recommended it in the first jail reform packet. The one thing that for jail reform that Supervisor Semidion is requesting is that we not use anything, including OC spray, in unless someone is actively being assaulted. My question to him was, what are we going to do when someone storms the county building, much like they did the state Capitol? Apparently, there's no answer to that, and it persists. We have exceptional staff and we have embraced change and are committed to working together to solve the problems that have been placed in our laps. During an era of consent decrees and police reform, we have worked collaboratively to make meaningful change. And I think that you need to talk with the plaintiff's attorney and people who actually understand what's going on in the jail. And please don't discount the true dedication, commitment, and heroism of our staff. During COVID, we've all been here at work and working hard. This is increasingly difficult for us to continue this, given the fact that in the last budget cuts, we cut 266 positions. The county refused to hire into our vacancies. When our vacancies got too big, they cut the positions and eliminated those. We now are going to mandatory overtime, which really further demoralizes our staff. We know we're short-staffed. And at my urging, several years ago, the county hired a reputable company to do a staffing study. They paid $225,264 of taxpayer money for the study. And when they received the results, they buried the report. I repeatedly asked for the report and been denied. I suspect the reason for this is I the report would show that we have a major lack of staffing. How do you expect us to provide services we are required to provide without adequate staffing? I can only surmise that you don't care. You've laughed at my attempts to ask for more staff, and when we can't perform the functions, you blame. Within the sheriff's office, we are a paper system. We neither have a records management system or a jail management system. How can a progressive county like Santa Clara County allow this to occur? We have been advocating for these systems for decades. I'm being criticized for wasting money, yet we do not hear about the county's failures that negatively impact our operation. The county's IT department just spent $9 million in an attempt to finally build a jail management system. When the project failed, they scrapped the project and started all over. That is an entire waste of $9 million on that issue alone. The county refused to install cameras. I went to Costco and bought cameras. Some of those cameras are still in operation. But I'm afraid I can't buy a jail management system. I'm again asking for an investigation. A lot has been said. A lot has been said, is being said by Semidion. And we don't see the real nature of those allegations. And for the public speaker, I am not under indictment by the DA's office. I can't let that be left unsaid. And seriously, I've asked for investigations. You are prompting investigations. And should a person really be condemned before the allegations are known or the investigation is at least completed? When Mr. Tyree was murdered at the hands of our staff that was sworn to protect, we contacted the FBI. I personally contacted the FBI and asked them to come into our agency and look at how we do business. I met with members of the FBI, the US Attorney's Office, and asked for that review. They did review some of our actions, but declined to initiate a full investigation. And the reason for that is they saw that we were taking swift action, holding people accountable. We arrested the three members of our staff in one week. The FBI saw that and knew that we were not an agency that covers up crimes or actions of our employees. One area of criminal justice reform you're not talking about, you're not talking about the criminalizing of mentally ill. I urge you, the Board of Supervisors, to tackle the problem because you are the only entity that can. Blame yourself for either your inaction or your inability to know that this is a problem. We're currently facing a recall election for our governor. He was elected by the people of the state of California. He's been being blamed for many things. This really truly undermines the sanctity of a democratic election. I was also elected by the people of Santa Clara County and received, you know, nearly 300,000 votes. The people have long believed that my experience and dedication earned the trust of those that I serve. Joe's decided to do a no confidence vote. He's rallying his counterparts in state government to do the same. What's next? I will withstand your coordinated wrath, especially when impartial entities will investigate your spurious allegations. I hope that though, I hope that he rallies to support his criticism. I hope that those that he's rallying understand that he's attempting to deflect and blame. I guess you guys are joining in believing in his mission. I think at this point in my career, I can claim to be an expert in public safety matters. I began my career in 1973, when the only position open to women was deputy sheriff matron. We went to the same academy. We carried a gun. We were full peace officers and we were paid 15% less. Those were difficult times, a lot of name-calling and bullying action. I was, I stood proud and spoke out for what was right and just. I think bullies want to make up reasons to justify their actions and garner support. I was able to withstand the negatives then. It was a difficult time. Problem is now I'm standing up to bullies. I stood up publicly to Semidion. And I know that I'm expecting what's going to come from him next. The mayor of San Jose asked for my resignation. What does the mayor know about our progress in the jails? He doesn't acknowledge his role in helping those with mental health crisis. I submit he should take care of his city and look in his own mirror. Look at the ghost guns that are prolific on the streets and address your serious homeless issues. Other major cities have had successes in that area. For the Board of Supervisors, I guess blaming others for your failure is the direction you wish to take. It must be tough to find a person to blame instead of looking in the mirror at yourself. You purportedly espouse the power of democracy and then seek to undermine the will of the people. You're voting no confidence about a job and a role that none of you understand and have focused on what's going on in the jails with the mentally ill. You are ignoring the systemic issues of the best treatment and places for those in crisis. You are the only entity that can make a difference. Build a meaningful psychiatric hospital and give people the treatment they deserve. I'm willing to accept the blame. The buck does stop here. And but I also want people to understand what's the real cause, what is the issue? And what can you, as Board of Supervisors, do about it? Let's find a solution, not point fingers and blame. And if you want to point fingers and blame, look inward also. You've ignored this crisis. I brought it to your attention many times, and you prefer to ignore and criticize. I am asking that the board agendas to divert the $390 million earmarked for the new jail and spend it on a meaningful psychiatric hospital. Let's get treatment for those who who sorely need it and deserve the humanity of safe treatment, not jail. Thank you.
Thank you, Sheriff Smith. I turn back to Supervisors Semidion and Vice President Allen.
I'm happy to to address a lot of this. And I appreciate towards the end Sheriff Smith noting that the buck stops here and that she has the responsibility for what happens in the jail. I am not at all unmindful of the complexity of of our criminal legal system. Sorry, just had a page glitch. Pardon me for just one minute. But I need to see, or what I haven't seen, I should say, is words aligned with actions. Sheriff Smith mentioned that she's a victim advocate and supports mental health alternatives. And that people who have mental health illnesses should not go in jail. I agree with this certainly. But Sheriff Smith has had nearly sole and complete responsibility for what happens in the jail. And part of what I think is really essential that we do is diminish that role. Sorry. Six of the 37 elements of the resolution address mental health issues. And when we get to Item 18 following this one, I will be happy to address in more detail the larger systemic problems that we absolutely must address. None of that takes away from or diminishes the responsibility for the officer who has been in charge of the jail, who has engaged in the 40-plus verified statements of fact that have given rise to this concern. So again, I appreciate the talk about our larger system. That is a separate issue for me, and I look forward to commenting more on that in Item 18.
Supervisor Semidion.
Thank you, Mr. Chair and colleagues. It's hard to know where to begin. But I think what I'd like to do is begin with the comments that were made about mental health and acknowledge the importance of the issue and the work of our board in our county on the issue. But indicate that I'm disappointed and frankly somewhat offended by the fact that folks with such great need would be used in this way in an effort to conflate and confuse the issue in an effort to divert and deflect and deny responsibility. And I would point people, as Supervisor Ellenberg has, to the resolution itself and ask that you consider the totality of its contents and whether or not these issues have anything at all to do with the remarks offered by the sheriff around mental health. Because for the most part, they do not. It is not a mental health issue that three people have already pled guilty to participating in a contributions for gun permit scheme, as is documented in the resolution. It is not a mental health issue that KQED has reported on a bail capping scheme that went unaddressed in our jails. It is not a mental health issue that a member of the sheriff's own department testified under oath at a criminal grand jury hearing of a scheme to evade the provisions of the Political Reform Act involving tickets at the Shark Tank. It is not a mental health issue that an inmate was thrown in with 31 gang members and beaten to a pulp over the course of five and a half to six minutes. None of those are about mental health or a purported, and I might say recently evidenced, interest in mental health issues. If we want to talk about mental health issues, we can't talk about what Michael Tyree was doing in the jail. But it's not a mental health issue. The three members of staff murdered him and were convicted of murdering him. And that our county taxpayers were obliged to approve a $3.6 million settlement, presumably because there was negligence and liability on the part of the institution. Similarly, in Mr. Hogan's case, it was a $10 million settlement that was approved by a vote of our board. It was approved presumably because people felt there was negligence and liability on the part of the organization. And here we are again, as a matter of record, with litigation now filed on behalf of Mr. Nunez, claiming multimillion dollars in damages, again, presumably because of negligence and liability. So let's not misplace the center of this conversation. There is one question and one question only before our board today. And that is, does our board believe it can have confidence in the administration of the Sheriff's Department by the current incumbent? The gun permits, the bail capping, the ticket scandal, the beating, the settlements, all compel us to say we have no confidence. And this would be the case even were it not for the rather repeated and the rather repeated and widespread refusal of the sheriff to share information and operate transparently. But when the sheriff, in a criminal grand jury proceeding, rather than cooperate, pleads the Fifth and says, "No, I will not testify to assist with this investigation." When the sheriff says, "No, I will not enter into an agreement with our civilian monitor," which the civilian monitor tells us has not been a problem with other departments within our own county or in other jurisdictions where his firm has worked previously. When our management audit firm tells us that they are not given the information they need to deliver a responsible audit. When the local media makes the same claim. And when we learn about a beating in the jail six months after the fact by watching television footage on the news rather than pursuant to the information-sharing protocol, which should have been, but wasn't followed. It seems to me we cannot help but conclude that we don't have confidence in the administration of the Sheriff's Department. Now, there's been some question about whether or not we are well-positioned to offer that judgment. Let me just say, we've got support for the motion of no confidence and letters from retired Judge Ladoris Cordell, who was the chair of the Blue Ribbon Commission, who our board appointed to that position and who six years later is more frustrated than ever. As for Mayor La Cardo, his letters speak for themselves. But he is the mayor of the largest city in this county with the largest police force in this county and clearly has concerns that have prompted him to speak out, not once, but twice. As is the case with our own local newspaper, The Mercury News. As is the case with both Mr. Ron Hanser and Christine Clifford, both of whom are affiliated with the folks at PACT but who have been intellectually honest about the fact that they speak on their own behalf. But Ms. Clifford, of course, was part of our Blue Ribbon Commission, again, appointed by our board. And then we have as well the letter from our own public defender, Molly O'Neill. And I won't read it all, Mr. Chair, but it concludes, "The scope and duration of the abuses detailed in the resolution are overwhelming. It necessarily compels the conclusion the Sheriff Smith is no longer fit to oversee the organization." Now, I believe we are obliged to speak up today for at least a couple of reasons. And I want to specifically speak to the fact that there was a reference someone made to shouldn't we let the investigations run their course? Let me tell you why we can't just let it go at that. The first is, these kinds of investigations take three or four years. And we know that just because within the last couple of weeks, the State Attorney General's Office announced the conclusion of their efforts in Kern County, where it took them three, four years to finally get to the bottom of wrongdoing there, both within that sheriff department and the local police department. We don't have three or four years, colleagues. We can't let another three or four years go by without change. The human cost, the organizational cost, and the financial cost are too great to just sit and wait. And we have an obligation to speak up, both to the community at large and to our own county organization, and say, "This is not acceptable behavior. This is not conduct that is appropriate." We can't allow it to go by uncommented upon and then be surprised that it becomes accepted, normalized, simply part of the exercise that people become prepared to accept. I am thinking of a quote that has always struck me as on point. And some of you have heard me reference it before, which is from Ella Wheeler Wilcox, poet, author. The quote is sometimes misattributed to President Abraham Lincoln. And the quote is, "To sin by silence when they should protest makes cowards of men." We have to protest. We have to speak up. We have to say this is not acceptable or we can't be surprised that we continue to see it in the weeks and months and years ahead. And if we don't share what we know and communicate it to the public, then the public can't hold their elected officials accountable. I think the one other quote that came to mind as I was thinking about this challenging exercise is from James Baldwin. And James Baldwin observed that not everything that is faced can be changed, but nothing can be changed until it is faced. And we are at a point where we have to face up to this. We can't wait three or four years. We know that independent of any investigation, there is a parade of horribles that has been marching, marching, marching. And we have to call it out and say, put an end to this. We have to both raise our voices to effectuate change and we have to raise our voices to make sure that we don't normalize the behavior as acceptable. And so I'm asking each and every one of you individually to ask yourself this simple question as we close. Do you really have confidence in the incumbent sheriff to faithfully and effectively execute the duties of her office? Do you really want to tell the public that the conduct that is documented, not that is debated, the conduct that is documented, is acceptable? Do you really want to reinforce, reward, applaud this bad behavior? I have to believe the answer to those questions is no. And I ask you for an "I" vote on the item before us today.
All right. Supervisor Ellenberg, you spoke. Neither Supervisor Lee, your hand is raised.
Yes, thank you, President Wasserman.
You're muted, sir. Supervisor Lee, we can't hear anything that you said.
Okay, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, very good. Thank you, President Wasserman. I would actually like to present a friendly amendment to the current motion. And I have shared the draft with our county council earlier today. James, would it be possible for you to see if you could share that to my colleagues for discussion on this friendly amendment?
Just give me a couple minutes, Supervisor.
Thank you. And while you're working on it, maybe I could just speak about what I was thinking here. First of all, I want to thank the sheriff for her very moving testimony of identifying the very important problem we have regarding our mental health being put in jail. As we all agree fundamentally, those who have mental health needs need to not be jailed. They need to be treated in mental health facilities, what we need. And that's why, since the time of my predecessor, Dave Cortezzi, has put forth the proposal of studying the building of a mental health facilities. And that's only something that we continue to work on with our jail reform referrals that we've been working on right now. And we're still taking public comments regarding this idea of new jail versus, or in addition to mental facilities that we're talking about. And so adding more beds is absolutely truly needed because of the pain and suffering we've seen in previous, not months, but years since the times I was in the Blue Ribbon Commission five years ago. At the same time, I just want to point out that our sheriff has served us for over 47, 48 years, and which is not a small amount of time. I mean, half-serving, close to half-century of our county is certainly quite a significant amount of service and has so much expertise and experience. And I really do think that any of these type of changes really needs her help for the transformation to take place. From her testimony today, I could hear that she truly understands the need or what changes are needed. And we really want to work with her so that this type of a transition, when the time comes, would be smooth. As we know, the sheriff's position, unlike, you know, like police chief and city councils, the sheriff is independently elected. Her term does not end until the end of 2022, right? So from here onwards, there's still at least another 15, 16 months where the sheriff is still in her office. And I just want to propose this amendment in a way to work on improving our community by having a workable succession plan and a smooth and functional transition that's transparent, that's well-functioning. And of course, that requires the cooperation of not just our sheriff, but everybody, rank and file, right? To work with all our different bodies. As many have mentioned, regarding the mental health issues, many of those are being treated by the custody health department, which technically is not under the sheriff's control. That's under the chief executive and the head of corrections. So I think it is so important that we leave that dialogue open and cordial so that we are actively working together to implement, for example, the remedial plan that's needed for the federal consent decrease. Making sure that the gaps that's been identified of the custodial health is made available in terms of necessary personnel to be added. We talked about oversight that I believe the sheriff has worked with now more closer with OCLAM regarding these other issues of use of force and other measures. And to also work with our chief, the county's executive's office regarding other training issues. Because of course, training is so important, fundamental part of the culture that is so much needed. Including, for example, implementing the vaccination mandate that we are putting forth of our employees, which of course also applies to our jails and correctional facilities and our sheriff deputies as well. So these are the issues I tried to address in this friendly amendment. And I would like to have our colleague to stick some time to read it. I tried to summarize what I just said in there. And if this is something that the makeup of the motion will be willing to entertain.
Mr. Chairman, sorry. Screens, so I'm going to need a minute to access it. And I can only see a portion of it on the screen. So if you'll bear with me for one minute, sir.
And I have a procedural question for Supervisor Lee. If a friendly amendment, to my understanding, adds on to the First Amendment, are you suggesting that this is in addition? Or are you offering a replacement? In which case, I think that's not a friendly amendment, it's an alternative.
Correct. No, I'm not doing substitutes, what you're asking, though. I'm just trying to put this as a friendly amendment. And sorry, James, we might have to have you, wordsmith that like you are so good at, to add to the current existing motion. Because I think it's as important for us to address the issues. And I really would like to, you know, highlight the fact that, I mean, there is serious significant contribution of our sheriff having worked with us for 48 years. And I think that needs to be recognized as well to balance off what we have here. And also the, you know, what are the important transition we need to make sure?
Excuse me Supervisor Lee, I'm going to take the prerogative of the chair and interrupt. I get the question from Supervisor Ellenberg. I think what you're saying is this is a friendly amendment, not a substitute. Is that correct?
That is correct, yes. That is, that's the answer.
Thank you. Let me continue.
Thank you, Chair.
But does it? Sorry, if that's not... It's not clear to me if it's to, and a friendly amendment meaning tack on to the end of a resolution of no confidence?
Yes, that's what he has said. The problem I'm having, and perhaps I'm the only one, is this appears to be three pages. I'm so far able to see five, whereas it's...
Yes, President Wasserman, I just emailed this to the board members and to the clerk of the board. It can be restyled however the board pleases. So right now it's...
So you're saying, James, if we go to our emails right now?
Yeah, and I can, I'll scroll through this so that it's there. And I don't know if the clerk has a way of otherwise displaying it. So I'll scroll through it, but I did email board members and to the clerk.
Okay, I'm going to ask everybody right now to take a look at your emails as you're available. Let's give ourselves three minutes to read this highly unusual way, obviously, to do this. It's come up at 12:23 in your emails. Let's not scroll it. Let's just hold it. Let's read it. And then we'll decide what we want to do with it.
I think we'll have to read it out loud for the public because otherwise they have no access and then we're not transparent here with what we're voting on.
Yes, that's very true. Let's just do the awkward thing of having two minutes of silence right now. And let's just read this thing.
Supervisor Wasserman, may I recommend that Council Williams send it to...
Read it out loud.
No, to share it also with the sheriff.
Oh, yeah. Thank you.
If you'd like, somebody from the clerk's office can read this out loud while you're reading it, so as to save time.
You know what? Let's, because we've got to read it out loud anyway. And for me, reading and somebody reading something out loud will distract me. So let's, let's do that. Let's... Yeah, let's go ahead and just read it. Jess, can you read it?
I don't know that Jess has it. I have it here, so I'll go ahead and read it just to save time.
And Rhonda, when you read it, can it scroll?
It can scroll if I'm the one sharing it. So I am going to share, which will put James off.
And I apologize, the public surprises like this are often awkward to deal with technology-wise.
All right.
And let me, President Wasserman, I just want to make an explanation of why of the last minute. Due to Brown Act interests, I absolutely cannot have made these amendments or changes with the maker of the second of the motion. So therefore, the only time I could bring it up, obviously, is during public hearing and then after the public has been able to gather. So I apologize for the lateness of how we get there, but that's basically the quickest way for me to get it to the public.
Thank you, Supervisor Lee. And it appears you were reading a great deal of this in the beginning. So let's just get this one and done. Rhonda, will you please read from the beginning and scroll as you go?
Yes.
Mr. President?
Is that James?
Before you move ahead.
Is that Dr. Smith?
Just a suggestion about process. As I understand it, really, the board's being asked to adopt two resolutions. It's not really an amendment, it's two resolutions. If the board is concerned about reading the second one, you could always take action on the first one and then put off the action on the second one until later in the day or put off action on both of them until later on the day. I just sense that some of the board members are uncomfortable having not seen this before.
That is very true. Supervisor Lee, this is your resolution. Are you comfortable with this being a separate resolution?
Yeah, if it's amenable to the rest of our board member. Thank you.
Thank you. And James Williams, is what we're doing lawful?
Yes, this is within the scope of the item.
Okay, so board members. Let's take a vote on, let's end the first one and then...
Supervisor Wasserman?
Yes.
I'm still struggling here because...
Separate resolution.
But if that wasn't the original intent, if they were to be heard, if they were... to be heard, i- if they were to be approved together, that's that's very different. So I just, because what I what I still don't understand is whether Supervisor Lee's intention was for this resolution to replace the resolution submitted by Semidian or to attach to it, because it looks like its own freestanding independent resolution. It's not something that's inserted, you know, redlined into the original resolution.
Correct. Supervisor Lee, will you please confirm that?
Yeah, no, the the intent of this was not to replace, and I I apologize to confusion Supervisor Ellenberg. And I I think what we are trying to do here basically is, I'm I'm, what I'm trying to do is really to, as you know, I have a reputation, I'm trying to build unanimity. I'm trying to find a way that we've got everybody on board to agree on something moving forward, and this is my way of try to add on to the current initial proposal in order to hopefully find the unanimity, hopefully, support from this board of moving forward.
Unanimity on a vote of no confidence and these additional statements which appear to contemplate Sheriff Smith's retirement. So I'm I'm curious to know if if she has weighed in on that that as well.
No, she has not weighed in, and I don't want to lose control. Everybody, I don't want to lose control of this media right now. I'm I'm reading this in between hearing supervisors speak, in between having our clerk read it. I've seen a number of things here that I'm not comfortable with. I think we've determined that this is not to be part of the original item nineteen resolution. The public hasn't seen this, the sheriff hasn't seen this. I've got a problem going forward with this. I am open to, James, any solution you've got as far as dealing with this. Otherwise, for me, this is Supervisor Lee, this is so different to me than the resolution before us under nineteen, that I feel it needs to be an independent item. James?
Chairman, excuse me. This is Supervisor.
Yes.
I apologize for the interruption, but I believe the request from Supervisor Lee to have this additional language accepted as a friendly amendment was addressed to me and Supervisor Ellenberg as the maker and the seconder of the original motion. So with your permission, I now that I have a copy, I'd like to ask Supervisor Lee a couple of questions to further clarify, since this has been an unexpected development, and then give him and the board and the public an answer as to whether or not I, as the maker of the motion, would be prepared to accept this as a so-called friendly amendment. Would that be agreeable to you, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, is everyone having the same technical problem on the audio? It's a bit distorted, or are you all fine? Can you all hear me fine? Yes, and I can hear Supervisor Semiden fine. So go ahead, Supervisor Semiden.
Thank you. First of all, let me say thank you to Supervisor Lee for the time and effort that he obviously put into this item. This is a difficult item. I don't begrudge anyone reaching that conclusion. Supervisor Lee, I have the following questions if you can help me. I think that what you have asked is that in addition to the language that is already in our agenda, you are asking if that language can stand, but this additional resolution language can be attached as to create, in effect, a tandem item with a pair of resolutions. Did I get that right, sir?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, and it 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 was intriguing to me, as I gather it was, to Supervisor Ellenberg to see a reference to retirement by the incumbent sheriff at the end of twenty twenty-two. Can I ask you if you have any information about such a plan, or if this is simply an exhortation?
Well, this is an exhortation in the sense that we are encouraging or strongly asking for our sheriff to move toward disdirection. We we cannot order anybody to do such thing in this independently elected position, but this is basically the the motion to ask for that to happen.
Thank you. And the last question I have before I turn back to the to the chair to try and bring this to a conclusion is I thought I understood you a moment ago Supervisor Lee to say that if this additional resolution were attached to the existing motion and the original resolution, that that would get you to yes. Did I understand that correctly, sir, if I may ask?
Yes. That's correct.
All right, then, thank you very much Supervisor Lee for that clarification. Supervisor Wasserman, with that clarification, and I thank you for permitting the clarification, and now that I have the document language in front of me, if the seconder Supervisor Ellenberg is amenable, I I am prepared to accept the friendly amendment in the spirit in which it was offered. And to essentially ask for an eye vote on the original motion with the additional language contained in the friendly amendment from Supervisor Lee, if Supervisor Ellenberg is amenable with that.
I am.
Thank you.
Okay, now, the issues I've got are several. One, we've seen this additional resolution friendly mode friendly addition for five minutes. The sheriff has not had an opportunity to, certainly not to respond, I assume she's had an opportunity to read, but certainly not to respond. I'd like to hear from her first. And, James, this new information, is this something that needs to be opened up to the public again or not?
You do not need to receive public comment again.
Okay.
It makes sense at the appropriate time, though, for the clerk to either have posted the item to the agenda or to read it at the appropriate time.
Okay. I'm gonna ask the clerk to read it now. Then I'm gonna ask the sheriff to speak up to five minutes. Then we will come back as we have a motion and a second on the floor.
Right?
And read it aloud. I didn't mean just read it.
I knew that. I was just fixing my screen, so it was a little bit easier for those that are following along. Right. Whereas the Board of Supervisors has repeatedly affirmed its commitment to ensuring the safety and well-being of all individuals in the county's custody and has devoted hundreds of millions of taxpayer dollars to improving transparency, oversight, and treatment of individuals detained in the county jails. Whereas the Board of Supervisors is committed to holding county officers to the highest ethical standards and does not countenance any corrupt or unethical behavior in the office. Whereas the Board of Supervisors has the obligation and authority under Government Code Section two five three oh three to supervise all county officers, including the elected sheriff, to ensure that they faithfully perform their duties. Whereas it has become apparent that it is in the best interest for the County of Santa Clara that it is time for change at the office of the sheriff, whereas Sheriff Laurie Smith is elected to serve until the term ending in December twenty twenty-two and that she is eligible to retire after forty-eight years of service with the Office of the Sheriff. Whereas it is desirable that a complete and transparent transition to a successor of the Office of the Sheriff will be executed smoothly in light of the enormous responsibility of this office as the top law enforcement official in the Santa Clara Count, in Santa Clara County, responsible for over one thousand employees, including sheriff's deputies and correctional officers. Whereas a well-planned transition will minimize the interruptions, animosity, and enhance the continual building of relationships and instill trust between county residents and our public safety officers, which is of paramount importance to maintain public safety and will help restore the competence in the office of the sheriff. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the Board of Supervisors of the County of Santa Clara, State of California, that the Board of Supervisors exhort the sheriff to one, immediately initiate drafting of a detailed succession plan to be submitted to the Board of Supervisors in the next sixty days and commit to execute a smooth, transparent, and well-functioning transition of the Office of the Sheriff to a successor in preparation for retirement honor before the end of twenty twenty-two. Two, commit to cooperate fully and in good faith with the Office's Office of Correction and Law Enforcement Monitoring, Oakland Public Safety and Justice Committee, Finance, Government, and Operations Committee, and actively participate expeditiously with other investigations as stated in the August seventeen twenty twenty-one referral. Three, commit to expedite implementation of the remedial plan in accordance with the two federal consent decrees, including ensuring custody staff are prioritizing consent decree implementation and addressing identified gaps and making custody staff available for transportation and supervise and supervision of inmates for medical and programming access. Four, adopt changes recommended by Oakland regarding use of force and other measures consistent with the San Jose Police Department and neighboring law enforcement agencies. Five, collaborate with the County Executive's Office in continuing police sheriff deputy and correctional officer training academies, improving custody health, COVID-nineteen vaccination mandate implementation, and expediting security clearance application verification. Six, involve the rest of the county organization, including the county executive and the county council in transition planning and in policy and staffing decision between now and when the transition occurs. Seven, collaborate with the Santa Clara County De- the Santa Clara County Deputy Sheriff's Association and Correctional Peace Officers Association to resolve ongoing issues or grievances and expedite mentoring and development of the next generation of organizational leadership. Thank you. You are muted, sir.
Thank you very much. With that, I'm going to turn to Sheriff Smith for her comments on what you just read.
So, obviously, this has been drafted for quite a while, and I haven't seen it. I wish I had been provided a copy of what this was. This, this is a surprise to me. And I don't think it should be taken at the same time until I have the opportunity to, you know, respond to to what is on here. When I look at Supervisor Semiden went through his seven-page memo of allegations, which many are factually false. I would like county council to address the issue of the Nunes case because apparently Semiden doesn't understand the real facts in that case. Many other things are misrepresentations. He says an investigation is going to take three years. That's outrageous. We could answer several of those right now with providing facts and information showing that it's factually wrong. A lot of misrepresentations he also puts in there. For instance, us not not dealing with Harvey Rose. We're the only agency that continues to address everything to Harvey Rose. He took something that was a long time ago and made it fact now. I think it's really, really interesting that an elected public official would provide information to a newspaper and then quote the newspaper as it being facts. I would like fast investigations of these serious allegations. And prior to the board taking any action, this this is absolutely outrageous. Just because he lays it out, it's true, and just because he he quotes newspaper and media, it makes it true? I know many of these are not factual. You lay out serious allegations, you ask for an investigation, and then you say an investigation can't be done for three years? What happens to people's rights in responding to allegations? Now, with respect to the three-page document that I have not seen, I don't have access to my email right here. I I really would need to look at that further. It's to add that something on and to have this level of confusion by an experienced Board of Supervisors is dumbfounding. You cannot hit a person with a document and give them three minutes to read it and to respond. I would suggest that we have an investigation on all of Semiden's about allegations as soon as possible, and I mean within the next three months. Let's contact the FBI, have them come in. And look, it's not going to take three years. That is an an attempt by Semiden to make what he says factual, and by the way, we're not going to know anything for three years. That is wrong. I would what I came into this saying was that I want a mental health facility. But at this point, I'm also asking because of the outlandish and often false and misrepresented allegations that we have the benefit of an investigation and a quick investigation. When this came before the board in the past, I did a press conference and laid out many of the factual parts of his allegations. I do hope the board and the public has had an opportunity to see that. And yet it persists. I'm asking for a quick investigation prior to the board taking any action. I'm also asking for the thing that I have not seen, I do not have in front of me, asking that to be deferred. Thank you.
Thank you. First, I'm going to Vice President Ellenberg. Your hand raised.
I apologize, I don't have anything for you.
Okay, um, what I understand, Supervisors Semiden and Lee, please correct me. What I understand is that Supervisor Semiden, who's the motion maker, and Supervisor Ellenberg, who seconded, have agreed that this resolution be included with the original resolution from Supervisors Semiden and Ellenberg. Is that true, Supervisor Semiden and Ellenberg?
Mr. Chairman, I think it is substantially accurate. I I I don't think it requires a merger of the two documents. I don't believe that's what was suggested. I think it is an amendment to the motion.
Yes.
Which simply incorporates a second document, which is the resolution.
Yes, at the end of the day, though, the two things that are being voted on is one.
That is my understanding, and I see Supervisor Lee nodding, so I I now I see him nodding vigorously, so I will say, yes, that is my understanding, and yes, I am prepared to accept that.
You are Supervisor Ellenberg, are you prepared to accept that as well?
I am.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments from any of the supervisors? If not, we have a motion, we have Supervisor Chavez.
Yeah, thank you. It's hard to know where to start on this today, and I'm, I just heard you Mike weigh in on that. I I am you know, I I want to just start with two letters that are in our packet. And one of them is from the Deputy Sheriff's Association, and the other is from the Correctional Peace Officers Association. And, you know, both of them really lift up their desire to be collaborative, both with the Board of Supervisors and with the sheriff. Both of them, you know, acknowledge that they want to take leadership in the continued changes within the the jails. And I think that is also probably true for enforcement in terms of the the public realm as well. enforcement in terms of the, the public realm as well. And both of them really call on all of us to continue to work together. And I think that the point of Supervisor Lee's resolution really, really points to this idea that we have big obligations on our hands and, and very, very serious work that is being done in the public safety and justice system, and we need the, you know, we, we need that, that attitude and that support to carry through, especially during such challenging times. I also just want to acknowledge something that, that Sheriff Smith said that I think is very accurate, and that is that what happens within our jails is a responsibility certainly of the sheriff and of the county itself. And I, I just want to highlight all of the areas that interface between the Sheriff's Department and the county. Custody health, which has been a very important part of the, the reforms that we've been asked to make have really come through the, the need to improve our, our work in custody health, both in terms of the level of service provided and the types of service provided, which by the way is not just mental health, it's teeth, dental, physical health as well. And I'm sorry, I'm referring to the consent decrees. The other is that all of the construction that happens within the, the jails is really led by fleets and facilities. The budgeting process is a Board of Supervisors process. The fighting back and forth over staffing has been, you know, really between all parties for years. And I, I say all that because what I want to make sure doesn't happen today is that, that we don't think that we've solved the challenges within custody. Like, we're not, we're not close to that. And I know that no, no one's saying that, but I really want to say that to the public because what, what, what we have to make sure that we can do over the next, particularly over the next sixteen months, is even in a very contentious environment, continue to work together. And really, what I'm, what I'm acknowledging is that we, we, the board can't do that by ourselves. We need the partnership and collaboration with the Sheriff's Department and the men and women who work for the Sheriff's Department as well. So with that, I'm, I'm going to support the, the combined resolutions with really an eye toward both acknowledging that we have challenges, but that we have a higher obligation to, to really work together, to be able to support the people that are, are in our custody, to support our staff, and to really, our highest obligation is balancing the human rights of people who are in our custody with creating a safe environment in the public. And we rely very much on Sheriff Smith, you and your team to do that, and we'll continue to do so.
All right, thank you, and I see no other hands raised. Jess, will you please take a roll call vote?
Supervisor Lee?
Yes.
Supervisor Chavez?
Yes.
Supervisor Semidion?
Yes.
Vice President Ellenberg?
Yes.
President Wasserman?
Yes. All right, members, with that, that concludes item nineteen. I was trying to get eighteen and eight in before lunchtime. I don't think that's reasonable to any of us or staff members. I'm going to suggest we take a thirty-minute break right now, and we resume at one twenty-five, let's make it one thirty, so it's not too complex. One thirty, and we are going to pick up with item number eighteen, and hopefully get through these items expeditiously. And I will see you all in thirty minutes, one thirty.
Recording stopped.